I'm going to call to order the July 25, 2017 Issaquah City Council Committee of the whole council meeting. The first item on the agenda tonight is Arts Vision Plan presented by Amy Dukes, Arts Coordinator, Trish Blor, Arts Commission Chair, Leslie Moore Flug, Arts Commission Member. I think up here. Thank you. Do they work? Are they working now?
I don't know.
Or you can, maybe you can try sitting at this table here, assuming we can get the cameras and. Working. Okay. Sure.
How do we advance? Okay, you get to do that. Right?
It's me.
You can go ahead. Hi, we're very excited to be here and to share what we are presenting today. Amy, go ahead in advance. My name's Trish Blor. I'm the Issaquah Arts Commission Chair. I've been on the Issaquah Arts Commission for between 12 and 15 years. I'm probably the, I am the longest tenured, right? Yeah. So I've seen a lot of change, just as all of you have, and we-
Trish, can we just get a microphone check? I want to make sure your mic is on.
Oh.
Because a lot of times we can hear them sort of mag-
Okay, do I need to even, do I need to tell where I live?
No.
Oh, okay.
That's better. If you bring it closer to you, that's better.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. And we have some important visioning we want to share with all of you, and one of our goals is to do this on a more regular basis. In fact, we, well, the city hired a consultant, and we went through a fairly intensive visioning process between 2015 and 2016, and these were our primary participants, Amy and Leslie from the commission. And they will be presenting the gist of all that, but I thought I would just introduce by saying that the arts, because a lot of you haven't been around since the beginning of the Arts Commission. So we all started in 1988. We currently have 11 members. Seven of them are regulars, four are alternates. We have Amy for 15 hours a week, but we know that she gives a lot more than that. And we are fortunate to be funded through the 5% admission tax, which is for the for-profit venues in our area, which is basically Regal and Cinnabar. And then we do have a half of 1% funding for public art, and that's where we get our money. And the 2016 budget was, you know, roughly $395,000. We are trending up slightly from that, of course, as we get more and more people attending movies. So at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Amy so she can talk about how the budget is portioned.
Thanks. And I'm, oh, well, that's not great. Change the, I'll have to tell you what those percentages are, I guess. That's really odd. So this was a pie chart of our budget. The largest portion is actually 46%, and it's granting. That equated to about $181,000 in 2016. And we give away most of our funding that we get to community arts organizations to do programming in the city for a couple of reasons. One is because we don't have a lot of resources. That .375 position is what we have. And also because we have some great arts groups in our community that are experts in their field that do wonderful programming for our community. And then the next largest portion is actually over here, 35% to public art. Thirty. I don't know why that went out. There we go. 35% to public art. And I want to note that of that 35% that went to public art, it was about $140,000. There really, a very small portion was that half percent for public art. Most of the money that went to public art was actually money that the Arts Commission voted to do to increase the budget for our public art projects. And then the next largest category is staffing at 11%, and we had programming at 8%. So we just today, you might have noticed, put on a talk art festival. We do that every year. We had probably 500 people. We went through 400 popsicles in about two hours. We had 195 artists sign up. We don't do a lot of programming. That's one of our signature programs. And then we do a film festival in partnership with SIF in the fall. But that small bit is our own programming. Hopefully, our next graphics will show up. And then I just wanted to talk really quickly about our public art program. So these are just all really recent artworks. We have the Confluence Park Bridge, which the Arts Commission funded a good portion of the art part of the bridge. We had a new sculpture for the pool. We have one inside, but then when the trees were needed to be removed in front of the building, and the building looked so stark, we decided to help out by putting something there. We've wrapped now 12 utility boxes, and we have six more coming this summer. The lower bottom, you can't see that great, but that's actually a rendering for the Central Park public art. They'll be kind of a trail motif, and it's going to also serve as a bit of a shade canopy for that fencing. And then we have the skate park coming online this fall with some really cool artwork. So just really quickly to transition about the visioning, you know, why did we decide to do the visioning? And here are the main reasons. We had just gone through the cultural element. The Arts Commission worked really hard to revise that, and that was in 2014 and 2015. And doing that process made us realize, wow, a lot has changed, and we need to think about our programming and our ways of allocating funding. We know our community is changing. It's changed so much in the last decade, and yet the Arts Commission's granting programs hadn't changed a lot. We've been granting to the same groups a lot, doing the same kind of programming. So we wanted to think new and think about our growing community. We also realized, hey, we really don't have a lot of staffing resources, so we really need to think more about collaborating. We do a lot of collaborating, but who else can we collaborate with? And also internal collaboration. And then we have a lot of new capital improvement projects coming online, and we wanted to make sure that art really got embedded into those projects, rather than just coming after the fact and putting a sculpture in front of something. We really wanted the art to be integral to the project. And then a real interest in proactively advancing economic and cultural vitality. Again, our community is growing and changing, and we know those things are important to them. And then just the desire to stay fresh, creative, interesting. We are the Arts Commission. That is by nature what art is. And we really wanted art to be a solution to a lot of the problems that our community faces, rather than just sort of this nice kind of add-on thing. So that was what led us to put together a whole community group. And Leslie was one of our Arts Commission representatives, along with Joan Probla, who is no longer on the Arts Commission. And then we had a whole group of community members and arts leaders and the Chamber and other city departments helping us do this visioning process. So Leslie's going to talk about that now.
Thank you, Amy. I'm Leslie Moore Flug, and I've been on the Arts Commission for four years here in Issaquah. I've been on other Arts Commissions in other communities. I've been an art educator and also an art administrator, so I have a number of avenues that I've participated in. So I was lucky enough to be able to attend the Arts Visioning Process, and as Amy said, we had a great collaboration of city art leaders and Chamber and Downtown Association, Historical Society. And it really was a great mix of people, all looking at how we can make Issaquah the best place it can be, and how can we integrate the arts into everyday life and make them more accessible to all of our community members. And so I'm not going to read, you know, all the text. I think, you know, you've got it in front of you. I just want to do some highlights. One of the things that we, as we went through our process, we identified a focus statement and some strategic directions, and I think you've got some of that in your packet. So I will read the focus statement for the audience. "How can we, city partners and community, ensure that the visual and performing arts are enhancing the quality of life for all Issaquah residents and contributing robustly to the community and economic growth?" And one of the things that just came out earlier this week is a study, a national survey by Americans for the Arts, which said that the average attendee at any kind of art event spends $31.41 extra in addition to the ticket price. So that's the economic development happening right in the city at the snacks and dinner and buying artwork and buying t-shirts and hats and whatever else they buy. So that's one, that's one way to look at your return on investment when you're looking at what kind of arts bring to a community. So the strategic directions, we identified five different strategic directions, and I'm going, then we're going to go through these quickly. So integrating the arts into the policies, fostering arts as a primary part of our community in Issaquah, increasing capacity. And that capacity means not only increase in art events or activities, but also increasing capacity, in our staff capacity, to do some things. So that's one of the, one of the areas that we're looking at. Expanding access, I think we're always looking to that, and especially in some of our newer neighborhoods. And including and celebrating our diverse and multicultural communities. So as we look at each one of those, we participated in the streetscape and were partnering with the Parks Department on some projects. As Amy mentioned, you know, to get the artists involved early on in a project really works or makes for better integration of that project into, that art into the project, and it's also more cost-effective, so that you can look at ways to, you know, do pieces of the art as you're moving along, so it's not just an add-on at the end. We did a bunch of research on the 1%. The King County, as you may know, has a 1% for art on all new and renovation projects, and so does nine out of 14 cities in our, in our area. So we're looking at, you know, a half a percent in Issaquah, and how could we possibly make that a 1%? And as, as Amy said, we typically run out of money with our allocation because we don't have enough, and we're using, we're using some of the fund balance of our, in the Arts Commission, to supplement those projects. And we have a lot of projects coming up, as you know, all the capital projects that are going on. So that's one, one area that we're looking at. The second direction was fostering the arts as a primary part of our community. And one of the more popular things that you've probably seen around are the traffic signal boxes. And those, we have gotten great reviews on those, and lots of different kinds of arts, different artists. So the Art Commission will look at lots of artists, and we will kind of pick out different artists that we'd like to have around the community. And I know we're not the only city to do it, but I will say that of all of the cities that I've seen, I think we really have the most diverse, and we really have the most colorful and fun-looking boxes, so. And then we, we've kind of purposefully looked at how the art commissioners can try and attend all of our events. Of course, we always have attended events, but we're more purposefully this year, kind of at the meetings, asking who can go to this and represent and report back to our commission about what the attendance was and how it was received, and so we're really trying to get some of that information from what's going on. Our third direction, we revised our grant guidelines. One of the things we were focusing on was arts and education, because if you get people when they're young, if you get them appreciation of art, then they will carry that through their lives. And we really wanted to encourage new participants in our granting program. We had been funding the same folks, and we continue to do so for a long time, but we really thought we wanted to open it up to other, other agencies or groups that really might not know about it. So part of that is advocacy on our part, as Arts Commissioners, to make those folks aware of, aware of what's going on. You can ask questions if you want, I guess. I feel like I'm, am I going too fast? No? Okay. I don't even know how much time we have, but okay. The fourth, the fourth direction is expanding art access. Again, we reached out to the schools. A lot of the schools do not have art-funded programs. One of the, the activities that I've been involved in in the past is the art docent program. And there are several schools in Issaquah that have that, but there are several schools that do not have that. And so one of our thoughts and ways that we want to move forward is maybe helping some of those schools get grants, get grants so that they can start those programs. Just real briefly, it's a program where you have a volunteer art docent that goes into the school and provides art lessons based on the master's, and it's usually once a month into a classroom. And we, we have a, I work at Green River College, and we have a program through the Inner Urban Center for the Arts who trains those volunteers. So there's, there are some resources out there. And the other thing that we've, we're doing is launching a neighborhood arts pilot granting program whereby we're going to set aside $20,000 of our grant budget this year to pilot two to four specifically targeted neighborhoods. And we're working with our neighborhood coordinator here and really, you know, meet with those community leaders and find out what kinds of things they would like. It's not going to be something that we're dictating to them. They might choose something like a wearable art parade, or an arts hands-on activity day, or maybe a special arts performance. So we're really going to work with those communities and find out what would be, what do you want in your park or your neighborhood? And so we're real excited about that. And I think that's, that's a real visual way that we can get out to our communities and not have everybody come in, into the city, you know, to a, to a theater event or something. Okay. Our fifth strategic direction was including and celebrating our diverse multicultural communities. As Amy mentioned, we expanded our Seattle International Film Festival this year, based on one of our commissioners who had connections to the South Asian Film Festival. And so we, we used her collaboration there, and we're able to include that in what we're doing. And we're also including our sister cities in our signal box wrap. So that's another way that we're, we're able to kind of integrate that. So our next steps are working on a public art policy development plan. And that, you know, that will, that's something that we will work with the, with the city leaders in doing. And then again, as, as Amy mentioned, our outreach and partnerships. And I feel really good about the partnerships that we've done, and I think we're on the right track getting more partnerships. But anyway, so what questions might you have for any of us?
Questions? Mariah?
So I like seeing the coordination with the senior center and, and sister cities. Have you been able to coordinate and, and work in collaboration with other commissions in the city as well?
So we work pretty closely with the Parks Department and their park board. And in fact, a lot of the art that the Arts Commission works on also goes through the Parks Board. And then we are also really interested in their strategic planning process, and then once that's kind of completed, we're going to have a joint meeting and work with them on how the arts can integrate with that. And then human services, we've done some projects in the past. We did a artist project for, to make recipe cards for the food bank. So we're always open to collaborating, and that was why we had a lot of city staff take part in that, in our visioning process, so that they would know what we were doing and we would know what they were doing, and there would be more opportunities to collaborate. So I think we're open to anything, really.
And then just one more question. You were talking about collaborating across the board and looking for other groups to fund. So how, how are you going about that? Could you just speak a little bit more to that?
We've tried to get out our grant guidelines farther and further afield, use social media and other avenues. We also, I met with the curriculum director at the school district and actually attended a workshop in the summertime with teachers to talk about the grant opportunities. That was one of the ways we got out to the schools. And then, you know, we've been sharing it more, again, with the staff members who were part of our, our planning process to get out to their communities. So, because we don't, we're really open to anything. Our guidelines are actually very open, and so, you know, arts and healing, or, you know, a, a public art project that, you know, a community group wants to do, those kinds of things are all eligible. So we don't have super strict guidelines. So it is kind of easy to push it out because we are willing to entertain lots of different kinds of things.
Well, that's a great update. Thank you. Other questions? Bill?
Yeah, it was, it was nice to note that in your, I'm looking at your contextual scan, that you noted in there that quite a few, obviously, that there's a limited representation with minority communities and, and population, underserved communities. So I see that acknowledged in the present set, but I didn't see anywhere where a plan of part of this included what you're going to do to try to remedy that.
We have increased our diversity on the Arts Commission. In our last go-around, we, or actually the one just pre, prior, or just after the visioning process, we actually increased our diversity quite a bit. And then, you know, it's, again, it's that outreach to communities. We're hoping that our neighborhood arts program will really help us reach more communities and maybe less formalized arts groups, or, you know, if there is a community group that wants to share an arts tradition that they have with their greater community. So we'll be working through that program initially to try to increase our grant-making to different communities.
No one else? I've got two more, a little quick. And also in that section, there's one thing I didn't quite understand. You said, under weaknesses also, it said limited funding to Issaquah Highlands equity by population. I'm not sure I understand what that means.
I think what that means, and again, our group was quite large. We had over 20 people participating, so there are definitely thoughts in there that were maybe one or two people's thoughts. But I think it was meaning that the bulk of the funding goes to activities that happen downtown.
Okay. And then my last little question was accomplishments. You talked about the new high school performance center.
Right.
And my question is, you know, I remember when they, they built that, that was supposed to be used by the community, but in my watching, I haven't seen it used very much at all. And how much have we really been able to use that through the community outside the school district projects?
We used it for a film festival prior to having Cinnabar actually give us the space for free. So we like free, so we took their space. But we did have a film festival at the high school, which was great. I think the challenge with the high school is that it goes a little bit dark in the summertime, which is an active time for our arts groups. And initially, when they first opened, they had some dedicated staff who was running the theater. And over the course of the years, they've kind of limited that position. So I know when we did the film festival, we actually had to hire a theater teacher to come on for the weekend and get paid overtime to do that. So the problem, I think, is, is that there's not really staffing there during the times in which the arts groups would want to use the space. And it's not cheap, actually, but we will keep working with the school district. I mean, we've made a good connection with the school district now and made some strides, so I think we'll keep working on that relationship because it's a wonderful asset.
So they're, they're charging for that, even for nonprofit groups to use that?
Oh, yes. They even charge the city to use it, even though we do have an agreement with them.
Okay. And scheduling and getting ahold of them.
We still have to pay for the staff. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments? Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Mariah.
Thanks. So a couple of comments, this off the top. It sounds like your root planning process, going back and looking at yourself, was so thorough. You explained it really well. A lot of times that can be very complicated if you're not a subject matter expert in what you guys are doing. But the depth of what you've done and the number of strategies that you're looking at, how many different ways you are trying to get arts and culture in the community is really, really commendable. The things I didn't know about was this neighborhood community program that you're piloting, and that is such an exciting thing for council to hear, since we invested in that program ourselves for, for other purposes, and to hear that you're using that as well is just great. So I had a couple of questions. It sounds like there is a .5% of city public projects that contribute to the arts. Are there, is there any percentage of private construction projects that contribute to the arts?
No, there is not.
Is that done in other cities?
Occasionally, mostly in California. So there are a lot of Bay Area cities that do-
So we could be the first.
That would be great.
And then the other piece to that was, I'm losing my train of thought here. When you talk about it should be this percentage or that percentage, so Issaquah's 38, 36,000 people. For cities our size, is there a range of numbers that arts are usually funded by? Is there a dollar per person that number that is used?
Yep. Different cities use different funding formulas. A lot do that per capita, you know, $2 or something like that. But there are smaller cities that do have the 1%. Maple Valley does. It is always hard for us to compare ourselves to, you know, other cities in our region. We always think of, you know, Redmond and Kirkland-
Big ones.
And they're so much larger than us. But Maple Valley actually just this past year passed a 1% for public art after going through an extensive process with Four Culture in the county and getting a lot of help.
Some of the other ones, I know that Cant has $2 per person. Bellevue has $350,000 per year. Amy said that might be an old figure. That's the one that we had.
It definitely is.
I know Federway has 2%, and I know both of those cities are larger, but then theoretically they might have larger project and more projects. So, you know, it's, it's kind of relative.
Kind of a final comment on the financial side is that I sense there's a future ask here, and we are entering a budget season. One thing that's really helpful to council members in particular is to understand how other jurisdictions similar to us and in character or size do this. And I think there's a big public sentiment now that growth should be contributing to these, these aspects of our community development as well. The last couple of questions I had was, there was a plan to preserve and adopt significant buildings, and maybe I could have found more information about it, but it was like, what buildings? Our buildings, city-owned buildings, privately-owned properties? Like, what was that really meant to encompass?
Right. So that one was in sort of the back-
Yeah.
-work behind some of these other things. We did have the Historical Society, the history museums participate in our process, as well as people from planning and other departments. But, you know, I think the point of the plan is that it's really just, it's a community plan. It's not just the city's plan. So everybody kind of contributed different parts and pieces. And then the second phase was when the plan got handed over to the Arts Commission, for the Arts Commission to figure out which pieces of work they could advance. And so that's not something that the Arts Commission has really addressed. I mean, I think we wanted to capture it and say, hey, our arts community is telling us that this is important. That kind of falls a little bit outside of what the Arts Commission does, but we didn't want it to-
Be lost.
Be lost.
That's a great answer.
Right? But it's not something that we've really put in for us to advance because it's not really within our-
And I guess I would expand on that a little bit, saying that that is a very overly broad-
It is very broad.
-goal, and that city property is one thing, and city-owned assets are one thing, but walking onto private property and, that would really have to be kind of spelled out a little bit more specifically. And there was a notation about institutional barriers on one of the comments, and I'm not familiar enough with what you do to understand what those institutional barriers would be.
I think some of that was related to reaching out to diverse and multicultural communities, you know, feeling like a lot of our institutions are sort of very traditional, and it could be, you know, just even their hours, or, you know, where they're located, which again is one of the reasons that we thought the neighborhood arts program would be a great opportunity to try to reach new audiences, to connect to something that was important to other departments in the city, and we want to be doing more of that kind of thing.
Well, that was an awesome presentation. Thanks.
And we're working with your staff member, your neighborhood staff member, on that.
Which is great.
Yeah.
So my question is, do you know-
And that city property is one thing and city-owned assets are one thing, but walking onto private property and that would really have to be kind of spelled out a little bit more specifically. And there was a notation about institutional barriers on one of the comments, and I'm not familiar enough with what you do to understand what those institutional barriers would be.
I think some of that was related to reaching out to diverse and multicultural communities, you know, feeling like a lot of our institutions are sort of very traditional and it could be, you know, just even their hours or, you know, where they're located, which again, is one of the reasons that we thought the neighborhood arts program would be a great opportunity to try to reach new audiences, to connect to something that was important to other departments in the city. And we want to be doing more of that kind of thing.
Well, that was an awesome presentation. Thanks.
And we're, and we're working with your staff member, your neighborhood staff member on that.
Which is great.
Yeah.
So, my question is, do you know if, if the Four Culture access for all levy passes, is that expected to impact the finance, any of the finances for how Issaquah does our beyond? I know that Village, the Village Theater was a, was a specific target recipient of dollars in that proposal.
Right. As the ordinance has written, the funding is not allowed to go to government agencies. So, the Arts Commission wouldn't receive any funding. But what would happen would be that all of the arts organizations in our community would be boosted by that in addition to our schools program. In fact, the schools program would really receive a significant boost. And so, that might really enable us to look at how we do business differently. I mean, right now, we give the majority of our annual revenue away because we know that our community arts groups need it. But if they're receiving additional funding elsewhere, we may be able to really think about being more strategic about how we're giving it versus just kind of giving it out to them. I mean, they'll have new revenue, all of them will. Village Theaters will be significant, but a group like Art East or even the Fish Hatchery will have a good amount of additional income, so.
And remind me, is that one that we're going to know about before November or is that on the November?
That's correct. It's on your August ballot.
Okay. So, it would potentially inform budget conversations as well. All right. Thank you.
Anything else? Great. Thank you very much.
You so much.
Very good.
I just wanted to recognize, we do have a couple commissioners.
Oh, yeah.
And here's Julie Griffin and Emily Morianna.
Hi, welcome. Thanks for coming and thanks for the work that you do.
Also judged art walk today.
Amy has been at the community center since eight this morning.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, affordable housing, housing strategy. This is, is this regarding the development moratorium. Presented by Trish Heinonen, planning, our policy planning manager, Keith Niven, economic and development services director, and Arthur Sullivan from a regional coalition for housing, otherwise known as ARCH. Hello, everybody. Hi.
as part of the moratorium. And you received in your packet a memo that talked about expectations and a draft of the housing strategy. And tonight, we're going to just briefly remind you of the process. We're going to tell you about the nine strategies that have been developed by all of our support groups and, and outreach. We're going to unpack the strategies a little to help you understand what's coming next and, and talk about what comes next after we've unpacked them. Just a quick process overview. We actually started this before the moratorium. We started it back in 2014 when you had a council goal about affordable and workforce housing. The next year, in 2015, we came up with an affordable housing report card where we showed you where all of our affordable housing in the city was and things that we were doing and that our neighbors were doing and things that we hope to do to bring about more affordable housing. As part of the moratorium, since we weren't getting any in central Issaquah, you added affordable housing as a moratorium item. And we came up with this process to address that. In September of last year, you saw the inventory and the forecast of what might happen with our housing if we kept going the way we were going. And since that wasn't acceptable to you all to keep going how we were going, we started with support groups. We met with six different support groups, service providers, seniors, the realtors, big businesses, small businesses, and the school district on what do they need for housing and what do their employees need and what do their service providers need for housing. We also met with the Planning Policy Commission, Human Services Commission, and Economic Vitality Commission jointly. They were kind of our dream team because they, they were all walks of life and all perspectives. They were just a great group that we worked with five different times. We really worked them hard too. But they came up with some, the nine strategies and a mission statement and problem statements. They were a fabulous group. We also, as another public tool, outreach tool, we did a survey online and we got over 170 responses. And those pretty much mirrored what the joint commission helped us with. So, that was another way of getting outreach. And with that, as the big process part, we are now in the third little button there, giving you the strategies that we've come up with and unpacking them for you tonight.
So, I want to start by just going through some of the observations that came out of both consulting work from Eco Northwest as well as from the focus groups and, and public outreach that we did. So, there's not many. I didn't include many. There's more in your packet, but I figured I'd go ahead and just share some of these. So, 45% of the housing inventory has been built since 2000. The big four items that came out of our public outreach, workforce housing, lack of diversity, housing, and that's housing diversity, so that's product styles and sizes, housing for the extremely low income, and then a desire for people to age in place. Right now, a lot of the feedback we got back was that there's really not that many places where you can stay in your home basically your whole life. And so, rents and home prices have increased dramatically since 2012. That's not new information for any of you. Single-story, two-bedroom homes. Almost every focus group that we met with said, "You know what? If those were being built in our community, I would buy one. My kids would buy one. I would downsize into one." That product just really doesn't happen in the marketplace here locally. Workforce hiring and retention of employees was identified as an important part of our current business concerns. 66% of the survey residents know someone who has chosen to live outside of Issaquah because they could not find housing here. Homelessness.
Keith, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So, single-story, two-bedroom homes for entry level or move down are virtually non-existent. And that was an observation, a comment made by focus group, at least one focus group member. And so, did, have we asked the question, "Why?" Because there, it, I don't think it's just that it's not existent here.
So, part of it's.
I don't think it's popular everywhere for certain reasons.
So, part of it's the economics, right? If you have a lot and I can build either a one-story, two-bedroom bungalow or I can cram a 3,000-square-foot, five-bedroom house on and sell it for over $1 million, a home builder will always choose the second one. And I think part of the info from Eco Northwest showed the number of million-dollar-plus homes that were being built in Issaquah has, has spiked dramatically over recent years. That's just a trend. And so, part of, if we want to address that particular issue specifically, I think the question is, is can we, as a city, figure out how we can maybe change our regulations to maybe incent builders to build something smaller rather than something bigger?
So, I, so I'm sure that's part of it. There is, from my anecdotal experience, there's also another really good reason why two-story, single, that story, two-bedroom homes are not that available and built that often is that's because they're not hot in the resale market. And so, I think there are other reasons besides you can get more square feet on a lot and sell it at a higher price. And we, we don't need to go into that here.
I was just curious because, you know, we can make a lot of observations and we can
write down a lot of observations, but then turning those into facts that are a problem that we're trying to solve, I think is a different question.
Right.
Okay.
And I think all we're doing here is, is giving you guys some glimpses into the feedback from all the hours we spent with focus groups.
Sure. Mary Lou?
So, in going through the whole packet, I know we're doing it at a very high level tonight, but 60% of survey respondents, just give me an idea, it's like a couple hundred people responded to the survey?
Uh-huh. Over 170.
170. And the focus group stuff that we're talking about, how many people participated in that?
Over 30.
In all of the groups, the total number that participated was 30?
It was over 30. Yeah, there were six different focus groups with six different topics. And in those, there was, the total was over 30 people in all of them.
So, we did like big employers, small employers, school districts. So, we targeted specific groups that we felt might have an interest in housing locally to form our focus groups.
Like housing groups we already have in town, are at the table? We have, no, housing groups that we already have in town that actually build the housing op, they were at the table.
We met with developers.
We met with, right.
Yeah. So, builders.
Like housing groups, not developers, but housing groups.
We met with service agencies as well as.
In the focus groups. It just seems that if we got 20 people to help us work on the arts, we could have gotten more than 30 to help us work on a citywide housing strategy. It just doesn't sound like a very big number.
It wasn't, it wasn't about quantity. So, what we did is we, we figured out which kinds of people we wanted to hear from. So, we created the groups. And then, we populated them with a size, it was small group specific. So, we said, "You know what? Having five people on each of them, that's a great roundtable conversation about housing needs."
Right. Okay, that's, that makes sense. Thanks.
And then, kind of the last one in the bottom right corner. So, what is important for housing and the biggest four items, proximity to daily needs, cost, safety, and then quality schools? So, from all of the kind of input that we got, all of the survey responses and the focus group input, we talked about that through with our commissions, our three, commissions three. And really, it came, we came up with three different problem statements. There were overall arching problem statements associated with housing. So, number one, the overall housing affordability in Issaquah and the region has decreased for households at all levels. Number two, individuals and families cannot afford to choose to work and live in Issaquah. And number three, housing types are not meeting the diversity of demand. And again, there's, you can argue both sides of all of those points, but I think generally speaking, that was the calling out of all the observations and into three general problem statements. So, from there, from there, we, we developed our nine housing strategies. Yes, sir.
Before we go into the housing strategies, earlier in the packet, there's actually a vision statement, Issaquah's housing vision.
Yep.
And, and it seemed, I couldn't find that anywhere else. So, it was developed for this.
Yes, it was.
And I think, I think it's very key because as I went through these different strategies, kind of tying them back to a guiding vision, and I did go back and review the comprehensive plan as well. Were you, maybe you are not planning to cover that, that vision statement this evening because you've already gone past that.
So, we can. So, part of this was, this, this presentation was really meant to focus on the nine strategies and to unpack those and talk about what the outcomes might be associated with those nine strategies. If you guys want to, there's a lot of the background information that led us to those nine strategies. And if you folks want to go through any of that, more than happy to do so. I think it might be appropriate at this time to just spend a little bit of time on that right now. So, this, this housing, this housing strategy is basically, in my mind, it's, it's an action plan. It's something to really guide our actions for the next two to three years, to do specific things, to measure the effectiveness of those things, and then to reassess and decide whether or not we need to do different things or whether those things are working well. You know, we already have a housing section in our comprehensive plan, so our long-term, 20-year housing policies are already set. This is really more addressing kind of key action items for the near future for us to then, to say, "You know what? We want to move the needle." And how do we do that? And by taking a more kind of programmatic, short-term approach, we think that's the way to get there. And this vision was developed as part of this process for this action plan that then leads into the nine strategies. Or hopefully, they tie back and forth with each other. That's the intent.
Paul, you want to touch on the, pull the vision up and review that so the public can see it on and hear a discussion?
I'd like to.
I think certainly council members can ask their own questions, but at least the background on how the vision was developed and.
Right. And you also, I saw the memo, what you're hoping to achieve, and I, and, and I certainly support that. This is maybe a little bit of a sidetrack, but I think it's essential, especially when we start looking at the strategies. I was unable to, to read and consider those without thinking about the overarching strategy and objectives that we have. And then, and so, the, the packet material we have today, you, you do need to supplement it. You need, we, we do need to go to the comprehensive plan and read what's there. I know you have provided information sometime within the last couple of years, more about some tools that are available to us. So, like, so when we're going to get to the strategies, we're going to talk to them. But like this packet, for example, gets right into auxiliary dwelling units, but in and of itself, doesn't provide any kind of justification or background on why we think they're as good or as essential.
Or what we're trying.
For our strategy. So, that, those were some of the things that jumped out to me as I went through this packet. So, I think we can have these conversations, but I think we might, I'm per, speaking for myself, that there might be some additional background information that'll be essential to inform the conversations that we have.
Thanks, Paul. And to add on to that, I don't know if we're saying something similar or our minds a little bit different. I didn't see in here what, I saw the problem statements and then it goes to the strategies. And I, I missed the part that lays out pretty clearly where we're, what does success look like? How do we, what are we, what are the measurements? What are we, what do these strategies get us? And, you know, do we need 180Us? And if we do, where does that say that? And so, how is this strategy going to get us to that? So, I'm looking for the measurable goals that we're trying to achieve, and I didn't see that.
A comment as well.
Sure.
So, I actually am not a big fan of the vision statement. I'd rather call it a draft vision statement. Looking at the comprehensive plan, the words that pop out are diverse, preserve, enhance, maintain high quality. And this is sort of some of those words, but it's sort of all of those words and it's just kind of flat. So, it doesn't feel like we are actually really thinking about our housing strategy. It feels like we're just taking some of our words from our comp plan and putting them there. And if I was a community member and say, "Yeah, how do I want my city and my community to have affordable housing or deal with our housing stock in general?" Don't get much out of that. Maybe it's just not written in like non-government speak or non-planning speak, but it's not exciting and it's not invigorating and it doesn't sound like we're trying to solve a problem. It just sounds like some old comp plan language rewritten a bit. So, to me, I think the community needs to weigh in on that at some point. So, it came from some focus groups, which is great.
It came from the three commissions, actually. So, you know, so they were representing.
Did they have public input there?
Well, they were open to the, yeah, there was, those were public meetings. They were televised. They were attended by the public and some of our public provided comment at those meetings. So, so I get, I get the comment about the language and we can talk about how that either plays into the comp plan language or not. So, so noted. But it, it was generated through a public process and not by planning staff.
But it'll have another public touch, though. The community will come in and.
This still has to go to PPC before it comes back to council. This is really your first chance to see this, to talk about the nine strategies. Talk about the vision statement. This is the first chance that you guys are seeing this. So, I, I expected this kind of reaction to, "Hey, where did this come from? And this doesn't make sense. Where's the, you know, where's the connect the dots?" You know, what I would say is, the appendices that says under construction, you know, part of, I think what Paul had asked for earlier was what we had already expected to put in the back of this. So, these are great comments, absolutely, because we're building this document to get to PPC and then it will come back to full council and then go to, I assume, land and shore or services. We need to maybe get some clarity on that at some point. So, so, yeah.
So, because it's in response to a moratorium, I look at our comp plan and if we're following it, it's failing in outcomes. And so, this was supposed to be something that took us in a new direction where we're going to come up with strategies and we're going to deal with stuff because what we've had in our comp plan and code has not gotten us what we want. And this just looks like another version of the comp plan and code language. And so, I don't know, that's why I'm kind of stuck on it. It just doesn't seem to really address the problem.
So, we haven't gotten to that conversation yet, which is, you know, so tonight, what I wanted to do was spend the most of our time talking about the nine strategies and say, "So, what does that mean?" You know, you guys have language in here that says, and we'll just use ADUs.
So, let's go back to the vision. No, let's go, so timeout, let's go to vision.
Yes.
Paul had a question about the vision. And so we're now back on vision. And so what we've heard is, we heard how the vision was, how the vision was developed. It was developed through the three commissions. What other questions or background would the council like to hear about? Paul?
As I went through the strategies, I did try to tie them back. How well does this vision statement and how well do they mesh? And so that's where it didn't work for me. I think it should be, I think council should be, and I'm asking the staff to take another look at it. And I don't agree that maybe wordsmithing it this evening may not be the best idea. I do have a couple simple pointers. And I even have a proposed alternative. But I don't, I don't think we want to get into it that much. But I will tell you that the very last sentence in there maybe should be the first. And recognizes the importance, we recognize the importance housing plays in our existing city character or some form of that. Because that's setting the stage on why are we even doing this? And there's more, there's more to it. But I, but there is, it is a jumble of words that talk, you know, that were, there. Obviously, we're making references to being welcoming to people of all backgrounds and income levels, what have you. We're striving for certain things. We're striving for quality. We're striving for diversity. We're striving for a range of affordability. And we really want to provide opportunities for all who desire to establish their home to have an option within Issaquah.
Right.
And I think that's what we're trying to do. And so I used that. Then I went back and then, and looked at the, looked at the strategies. So I know we're going to get a couple other touches going forward. But, and I'm not exactly sure what you want to do with this or what the council wants to do with this. But I just want to put it out there for discussion.
Other comments? Were you raising it, Mariah?
I would agree with everything that we're talking about in regard to the housing vision. But sometimes, from a strategic planning perspective, it is, it can be useful to run through strategies because then it helps everyone think about, in the end, what they want that vision to be. So I just wanted to throw that out, that that's something in the past that I've seen that can be very helpful. Instead of focusing in on the words to begin with, I think it's really important to start with this. So we see what that is. And then maybe, once we have an opportunity to go through the strategies, then we can pull out key pieces and say, this is what, the piece of the vision that's maybe not making sense to me. So just a comment.
Good with that.
Bill, Tola, Eileen? And then I'll go to Mariah. And then, and then I have a comment too, after Mariah. Anybody else? Okay, Mariah Lou?
I actually agree with the comment. And I don't want to wordsmith. But I do think if we're talking about a vision statement, we should talk about what we want. And I agree with that last sentence, being what we want. But we also have to talk about why we're doing this. And we're doing this because we have this absolutely huge deficit that grows bigger all the time. That has to be in there. We have to say why we're doing a strategy. It's not just because somebody's requiring us to. It's because we have to, because we don't have the right mix. And then there has to be something in there that talks about what that looks like. And it should be in that order. And so I think there's going to be wordsmithing at some point. Maybe it's at planning policy. I don't know. But this, this, it's a lot of work.
So my comment is that, first of all, we have our comprehensive plan, the housing element, which is the higher level policy. And then a couple steps down, you have the strategies for how we're going to get there. And so the vision needs to connect the dots, as you said, Keith, between the comp plan and the strategies. And I've said it before, I'll say it again. It's easiest for me to figure out if we're getting in the, going in the right direction. Staying, staying on course, so to speak, staying focused, is if we kind of think of things as an outline. It's really easy to get lost in a comp plan when you go from, you know, objective H1, housing in neighborhoods. And then you start reading all the detail. If you pull out all the stuff and you just look at the policy, and then you go to the, you know, strategies, in between there, you've got to have that, that link between the two. And sometimes stripping out all the stuff in the lower level stuff after the policies and the comp plan helps me. Anyway, that's my comment.
Thoughts?
Okay. Now you wanted to go to strategies.
Can we start on the strategies? Okay, so I'm going to put that one up.
So I do want to say that we have 45 minutes scheduled. And although it doesn't have to be exactly 45 minutes, there is a lot that you're wanting to unpack. And so this, I don't think that this needs to be a wordsmithing completely, totally in the weeds discussion. You know, I don't get to control what people say and how long they say it. And I'm not in that business to do that. I'm just saying that we could be here for a lot longer than 45 minutes. So if you have some strategy to help us move through this, that would be great.
Let's start and see what it looks like. Okay? So what I would suggest we do is go through these one by one. And if you understand what the strategy is, great. I don't think we have to talk about it. If you don't understand what the strategy is, or if you don't understand what it is specifically we plan to do as action items to help implement that strategy, we can unpack that. So you guys get a sense for where we're going.
Okay.
So the first one is remove barriers, both processing and cost, to facilitate the construction of accessory dwelling units. Number two, provide deterrence to the erosion of housing stock and residences in established neighborhoods.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, this one, yeah. This one, the word, this one was hard to write. And so I can tell you what we were intending. So part of this one is what we've heard through our travels over the land have been the concern of some neighborhoods that there's teardowns, that there's conversion of units, that they're losing their character because of either infill or redevelopment happening within those neighborhoods.
So why wouldn't it just say preserve rather than provide deterrent to the erosion of?
So preserve, so this one, it depends on how far you want to go. For me, preserve means like, we put measures in place where nothing can happen. It stands still in time. Deterrence might make it more difficult and might bend the market. So let's say that we decide that we want to put a really expensive demolition permit, you know, fee in place. Well, now, if I'm going to go and want to demolish a house, maybe I think twice about it. And maybe I rehab it instead of demolish it. Right? So there, there might be some things we can do to not go all the way to preserve, but to do things to dissuade maybe loss of housing within established neighborhoods. And we'd have to, we'd have to be specific about what parts of town we have concerns over. I don't think it's citywide.
So I think I understand what you're trying to say. I just don't think it's said in the right way. And it's in a very negative way. And it's erosion means degradation. And I don't think that's what you're trying to say, but...
Struggled with that one.
So that's page 17 of the packet. Were you just going to fly through these and then dive down into each in more detail? Because there is more material in the packet. Is that what you're planning to do?
I was not planning unless you guys want me to. So like, on the first one, you guys didn't ask a question, so...
Well, because I didn't know what you were going to do.
So if you want to, so if you want to, so if you guys want to unpack any of these, we would do that individually. Because that might make more sense, rather than go through nine and then unpack each one of them.
Well, I just want to answer, so I thought you were going to read off each one. And if we had questions, then we're going to kind of fly through them. I think that was the unpacking.
Okay.
Respectfully, I don't want to fly through anything. I have focused on two things in the last eight years: workforce housing and living wage jobs. This is at the heart of one of the two things that I care about most in this city. And I don't want a 45-minute time limit to determine how much we go into these topics.
I didn't say there was. I said, we've got 45 minutes slotted. So I just wanted, I just wanted Keith's strategy to know kind of what he expected us to do. And I think his, the flying through was just a comment of, if nobody has any questions, we can go on to the next one. That's all that was.
I really want to know with all of these things, and whether we do it tonight or whether we send it to committee or how we do it, I want to know when this process is done, how all nine of these facets are going to contribute to workforce housing.
Feel, yeah, like I said, ask questions. That the only, the way we get to the next one, if there aren't any questions on the one we're on, that's the fly part, fly to the next one.
Okay.
Yeah.
So with that in mind, the first one was read and then the second one was read. So I didn't see any time to ask a question on the first one, so...
Number nine says, oh, just kidding.
Nobody asked any questions.
So we're on two now, but I want to go back to one.
Sure, go ahead.
Back to one. So I think Arthur wanted to say a few things.
Right. So probably for, maybe for tonight's conversation, one way of looking at the feedback we're looking for is we're not necessarily looking like for the first one, ADUs, about we want this and we want that. But those four numbered items below, we feel are sort of policy guidance that would help influence us in working in detail on that topic. So what you have is, you have on each of these, you have a statement. You have the strategy statement. Then we gave you a few sentences to give you a little background context. And that was just to give you some context of what we found and what the group talked about. And then you'll have a number of numbered items. And those are sort of meant to be like, if you think these statements are okay, that will help us in going to the level of detail to address the strategy. If you have a problem with one of those statements, it would be good to hear it now. Because that, this will influence how we work on, working on the detail for that strategy. So that's kind of how we were trying to shape this for input now, is to give you some like, policy-level statements to help us manage the work that we're doing to come back with more specific ideas.
Okay. Any more questions about what we're going to do tonight? No, okay. Paul?
ADUs. That's what I, that's what I want to talk about. If we're ready for that, real quick?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
It's been a while since we've talked about ADUs. And I think they're here, they're part of the strategy. There's an assumption, they do something, allow housing of different diversity and affordability. And yet, and they are actually a form of infill in existing neighborhoods. There's some assumption about they do or do not have an impact to the character of existing neighborhoods. They have impact some way. So that case, I want to, I need, I think this, I need that case in here. I can go with those assumptions and then we can talk about it a little bit more. But I think that's very important.
So that's what we tried to do with 1.2.
Okay.
Is to make the statement about the regulations need to try to encourage, but at the same time, respect the existing neighborhoods. So that's what was meant by statement 1.2, is the point you just made. And if we didn't think what you just, that's what we were trying to do there.
Oh, okay. So, so, okay, so that is, okay, I'm reading that a little bit different with that. So that's actually a claim about ADUs.
What we're saying is, is that one of the areas that we would look at under 1.2 is to sort of say, look at your regulations on how you regulate them. And do both, you know, how do you encourage creation while respecting the existing character of the neighborhoods? And that's the guidance we're saying if we're doing it. And not just to go hog wild with, make it happen. But hey, wait a minute, make sure you're thinking about character and fitting it at the same time. So when you come back, be able to talk about both. When you're presenting any suggestions for changes to the regulations. And we would have to come back and establish documentation for both parts of that state, that sentence, with any suggestions.
Mariah Lou? So one of the, one big thing I struggled with today is a lot of this, you can read about in articles, these are different strategies, how to deal with things. Not all of these strategies would work in all of our neighborhoods. So I had a hard time looking at these questions and assuming that ADUs might be in every single neighborhood we had. What would help me a lot is if we had a housing map that showed us the way the city is, what our housing stock looks like, which communities would have the option of saying that's the vision they had for their community? Because there may be some that say, our whole mountainside doesn't want ADUs of any form. So where do we get to that piece? Because it's really hard to look at that and say, yeah, I'm all for ADUs. I actually can't picture it.
Right now, you do allow ADUs in every residential neighborhood.
So my question is, the community probably doesn't know that. The community may not want it. So where would you recommend would be the best strategies and infill strategy? So we, as a council, can listen to our community when they say, yeah, we want it or hell no, we don't want it. Like, I'm having a hard time answering the questions without knowing where this would happen in town or where you, as staff, think the best place for this to happen in this town. Because the one who decides what their neighborhood looks at, at the end of the day, is mostly going to be the community, not us. We're going to put the tools in place so things can happen. But we're not going to force ADUs on a neighborhood that doesn't, that says, we didn't know that was in the code. And guess what? We don't want it as a neighborhood. So it's hard to answer the questions.
So, go ahead.
I'm not sure it's legal, right? The question is, how much should we be promoting it or not promoting it? Neighbors, my neighbors don't get to decide if I put up an ADU for my house. And amen to that. But I think it is up to us to decide how much we want to promote something that's legal. If there's any of us that think that it should not be legal or think it should, needs to be revisited, that's, it seems like a separate question.
So getting back to, I think, getting back to some of the kind of key observations and the vision, you know, what ADUs do, and so this gets back to what I think Councilmember Winterstein was saying earlier, how do these things connect, right? And so ADUs are a diversity type of housing. ADUs potentially allow people to age in place. So there are a lot of things, and I think part of this would be to build up that kind of pros and cons for ADUs. So you guys can say, well, how far do we want to go out there trying to get these things? Because you're right, the code now allows them. But we think there's certain roadblocks in place that is keeping maybe more of them from being built in our community and maybe some of our peer communities. Arthur always cites Mercer Island as being the ADU Mecca, right? Okay, so if, if at the end of the day, we decide ADUs are a good thing because they provide more housing with minimal impacts on our neighborhoods, then maybe we do want to make those changes to code and processing to try and facilitate them. But that's part of, I think, unpacking the ADU strategy. And you guys then deciding later whether or not you want to keep it as part of the nine or kick it off the island.
So let me pose a question to you to help provide guidance to staff on this question is, one way to take your comment, Councilmember, is to say, okay, one of the policy statements is, is it in every neighborhood? So we could add that. Now, what I will also add is you are now a city, I believe, is large enough that state law says you will allow ADUs in all residential neighborhoods. And it's just a matter of what, how you manage it happening. So that's something we would want to check. But if you want, we can add, and that's what we're trying to get tonight. Are we missing some points here that should help guide us in our work? So rather than get into, is that the right answer or not? The question here is, does the council as a whole feel like we should add in the idea of, is it equal provisions everywhere in the community? Or should there maybe be distinguishment in different neighborhoods, how they're implemented?
Just to comment, in general, I support ADUs. But there's still market rate housing. There, you know, there are smaller, hopefully, and get some variability and so forth. But there's still market rate. The way this thing reads to me is that the main barrier is processing and cost. So processing, to me, sounds like some of the city stuff you're saying. Some of those, you know, requirements, we may have costs. I mean, they're, they're not cheap to build. Someone has to, you know, put out some funds. I'm not sure on that, how that fits. But, you know, on item 1.3, you talk about impact fees, connection utilities and those kinds of things. And so that's the kind of thing where, that's how we provide our service to the number of people coming in. So if we want to look at changing those for these particular things, that's, that's a serious thing to me, saying, okay. Because that's what we collect per unit. And that's how we fund those things. And say, we want to not do that or change that, then that's, that's something very specific where you're saying, okay, we want to encourage this and the city wants to bear that cost. Where normally, we're charging that developer or that homeowner for that cost, right? Just want to...
ADUs are interesting. I think today, there is, there are probably significant number of households today that have multi-generations living in them. And it's not, the ADU, there's one being built on my street. It's actually not for parents. It's actually for children. And I understand that it does have to go through. It has the full, it has, it is technically an ADU. So there are the impact fees. There's other, the full hookup and all that type of stuff. And I'm going to go back to that thing you pointed out very early, this kind of observation that if there were single-story, two-bedroom houses, you know, that, boy, there's a lot, that starter idea. ADUs also definitely, in the case of my neighbor, is a starter piece. And, and is it, and I can tell you right now, the family is already there. It's providing a better, it's providing for a better quality of life and an option for a family to kind of grow in place as well. Is there going to be greater impact on the neighborhood? Actually, not. And so it's, it's, they're not one for one. So I agree, they're not one for one for like, a separate, all-new, single-family detached home where somebody moves in. It can be, but not all the time. So the, the, I think the policy, the questions that you have in here, my screen just went blank, excuse me. I think the idea, I have it now. Thank you, Tola. I am interested in us looking at ways where, through more information and the identification of, of potential cost-based barriers that, I think, this is where our vision comes in. It's very, very important. All people, perhaps, of different income levels and a... All people perhaps of different income levels and ability to get established and live in proximity to the services that they want, this is, this is a very good tool. And if we have barriers to that, that are higher than they should be, then I'm very interested in a strategy that, that lowers those.
Hey, Mary Lou.
So I think the ADU strategy is a good one to leave. The two concerns I would have is that I think we should ask a question, if it's something that we wanna encourage in all areas of the city. I think if we are going to strengthen it or promote it, I believe what we need to do is really make sure we've addressed parking and architectural style, which are two concerns I've heard in my neighborhood. And I agree with Council Member Ramos. I'm not in support of the taxpayers contributing to this style of housing being built by giving fee waivers and impact fee waivers. I don't think that's appropriate.
Other questions or comments?
I just gotta say one last thing. I, because I grew up in a lot in Oakland, where classic Mexican immigrant family moved in, and there was one house on there, by the time I was born, there was five on that lot. By splitting houses, building another one out back, and the family just grew and kept spreading out, and if we didn't have ADUs, I don't know what we would have done. So everybody just kind of grows together, it's kind of like what you're talking about of, of moving out. And I got a friend, Redmond City Council Member, where he's gonna switch, his, his kids are living in his ADU, and now he's going to move in, and the kids are gonna get the big house because they have kids now, right? So these are very good things, they're very useful, they're very helpful, and I support them a lot. Just wanna make sure they say the, how we, how we do that, and we should be, they should be allowed wherever people can work them in appropriately to the neighborhood, like you're saying.
Paula.
I think this issue of whether they should be subsidized or not is really, is really interesting and important. I, I would love to revisit it later at a time when, I would love more information on the role that ADUs have played in other high-cost areas. And I'm thinking, you know, South Bay in California, and, you know, these areas that we are rapidly approaching in price, that we're so concerned about. Because if it turns out they're an big, big and important and vibrant part of the marketplace in those places, then maybe it's worth an investment as a community. If it turns out that, that they've been marginally involved, then maybe, you know, then we don't invest in them.
Okay.
Okay, number two?
Okay.
All right. This one splits the page, my apologies. So, provide deterrence.
So we were on 1.2. What about 1.3 and 1.4?
Are we, are we ready to go to Strategy 2, or you wanna continue on?
I don't wanna skip, I wanna make sure we have an opportunity.
I commented on three and four.
Three and four? We're done with three and four? Okay, number two.
And Strategy 2. All right, so provide deterrence to the erosion of housing stock in residences in established neighborhoods. Okay, so 2.1, should the city get involved in limiting single-family redevelopment opportunities? If so, for every neighborhood or specific neighborhoods? And I can scroll down to the next page. Oh, look at you, Trish. Thank you. 2.2, should the city explore the enactment of regulations that would limit demolitions, boundary line adjustments, or short plating of existing residential property? 2.3, should the city explore regulations that would further limit the design and size of new single-family housing in either existing single-family neighborhoods and/or all single-family neighborhoods? And 2.4, should the city pursue supporting or providing funding to programs designed to preserve and rehabilitate existing single-family homes? So, lot of different what-ifs related to something, and that is whether or not we're concerned about the aging and changing of our existing neighborhoods.
Paula.
So this, this actually relates to something I was just talking about, which is the Bay Area. I think one of the things you see in places like Palo Alto, is nobody says you can't redevelop your property, but there's pretty circumscribed rules as to how you can redevelop your property, right? I think they have seven kinds of, you know, seven architecture types, and they have an architecture Citizens Commission, which goes through and reviews your drawings and all that kind of stuff. But the thing I like about that is, you're not saying, no, if you live in Old Town, you can't redevelop your property, right? It just says that if you're gonna redevelop it, it's gotta be something that has a certain character to it that relates to the city. So to me, that is something that seems a lot more positive than anything where we just said, hey, sorry, you don't, you don't get to redevelop your property. Whoops.
I don't think it's any different than any of our other sub-area plans. You know, the Old Town Sub area plan, just, you know, it's probably primarily, you know, there's some residential, but primarily commercial, and, but it's prescriptive. Yeah, there's some family, but, yeah, I, you know, I, I agree with what Tola said.
So one of the big areas, just in talking about this, so Old Town's clearly got a bull's eye on it, you know, but talk about squawk, right? You got big lots that zoning would allow smaller lots, you know, and so, you know, could you see somebody going up there and cherry picking some of the bigger lots, demoing the houses, and putting in, you know, two or three new single-family homes? And, you know, what would that do to squawk? So every neighborhood's got their own, you know, certain image that's kind of set right now. That's, I think, a great thing about our city, is we got it, we're a city of a bunch of neighborhoods, and they all have very different, unique kind of characters. And I think the question, especially with this one, is, you know, the market just hasn't started this yet. It's happening a lot in Bellevue, and some Mamish apparently, and I'm sure Arthur has examples from all over the east side where this is, this is happening now just because of the price of land.
We've also got people who are looking forward to maximizing the value of their property, and, and you're gonna get the same comments that we got for the moratorium, people saying, you know, I've been looking forward to this for decades because this is my retirement, and now you're telling me I have to replace what I have. Anyway, who was next? I thought, I can't remember who was next. Bill.
So, in, in reading, the problem I'm having with the Strategy 2 is, I think, the statement itself. Because all the other things are sounding like some good things, but the statement to me reads, there is erosion of housing stock, which means to me, houses are disappearing. So if you're tearing down a house and building another house, you haven't eroded the housing stock. You may have changed the type, may have done something else, but this reads to me, that the houses are, and we're putting something else there. So we're getting less housing than we had, is the way I read that strategy. So we have to stop houses from disappearing, because that would be a good thing to do if houses were disappearing, but I think it's a false statement. So I have a problem with that getting through there, and then when I get into, you know, and then we're just getting into some wording, but that's where I read that sentence. And, and it does get specific, I think you mentioned, Old Town and other ones are different. And I think we're looking at maybe trying to get some of those, you know, smaller bungalow kinds of things that might be helpful. But, you know, seeing demolition is, is, you know, outran, outlandish cost. When I had a house that had no foundation and was rotted out, there was no way you could do anything but tear it down. And there's some houses like that in places that, I mean, there's, you can't rebuild those, some of the things. So there's, there's difference in situations, whether you're just tearing down something and building something new versus that. And, and getting back to the character of the city, or the neighborhood, you know, if you replace a single-story house with a three-story house, that, that's, that's a little different than replacing it, you know, somewhat in kind, because the house is, you know, a hundred some odd years old, and it's, and it's rotted out.
I think I was a little schizophrenic on this one. This one clearly combines two different things.
Yes.
There's a character element to this, and there's also a loss of housing element to this, because clearly, you know, that's, they could be the same, but they're also could be very different, you know? And part of this is, you know, we wanna keep the number of houses within each neighborhood, you know, at least stable, if not maybe increasing, as part of, you know, infilling and adding more capacity to our city. But the other piece is character. And so I agree with you, of all the strategies that we ended up drafting language for, that one probably needs the most tooling.
I think Mary Lou, and then you, Paul.
So the, this one caused me a lot of heartburn, but now I think I figured out why. I, I like the fact that you talked about the housing, the lot size. Because I think there are some good things in Old Town that we can look at, which is like a minimum lot size and all of that. And I think there's some other things that are being looked at in Old Town in terms of, you know, how, how many stories should a house be? And I, I think those are good parameters to work around. The reason I had heartburn with this is because it kind of depends if I'm an existing homeowner who is going to demolish and build my house and live in it, or if I'm a builder who comes in and takes a formerly large lot and does something completely different and walks away and leaves it. And we're treating those like those are the same kinds of builders, and they're really not. I mean, if you have somebody come into the neighborhood, buy a small house, and then turn around and redevelop it, that's one thing. If you have someone come in and build four, three-story townhomes and never live in them, why, what do they care what they look like? We don't, because, and we don't have current architectural standards. So those are two different groups, and we got the same set of rules for both. So it could be, why I struggled was, it seems to be restrictive. An existing homeowner who wants to change their existing property and live in it, this could be very burdensome to them.
I was able to interpret the word erosion, I think, to mean that nearby improvements
drive up costs, while greater sizes and density ruin character. That's what I thought you were saying in this. And then when you get to 2.1, should the city get involved in limiting single-family redevelopment opportunities? That's an interesting, we have to dive into the word limiting.
Right.
Let's talk about greater size ruining character. I can show you some places in town, I can show you a place in Old Town where my interpretation of the new size and its proximity to existing homes ruins character. It's my interpretation. And yet, respecting, I think, the points that were made earlier about, but this property is part of my, it's part of my family heritage, or it's part of my portfolio. I've always envisioned it as being, helping me, or maybe me be able to pay something forward to my family. And so, the, the, very carefully, when I thought about that word limiting, maybe, maybe, maybe limiting can be defined, and this, I'm just throwing out an idea. Maybe there's something that, maybe there's regulations that speak to proportion in relation to other nearby, or proximity and setback. So one common story I've heard quite a bit is, is I had a small home, and I was among small homes, and now actually, there are big homes built up nearly to the lot line on both sides of me, and things have changed dramatically. And, and I understand, there's stories behind all of those homes. There absolutely are. Do we wanna go as far as a community to say, hey, that was too much, too dramatic, too fast? And maybe that first redevelopment, maybe there were some limits on that, because there were some portionality to existing homes you needed to stay within. And maybe subsequently, okay, the portionality is starting to change, size-wise, for example, and then you can, you can gradually make a change, or not. I, I'm just throwing those out as ideas. But I, but I did read, I think the intent was, was that, of the word erosion was, nearby improvements drive up my costs, and greater size and density ruin character. And, and limiting is, is saying, if we wanna preserve, you know, can we at least slow the pace down, or, or mitigate, or provide some minimal deterrent? Because you can totally flush down the character of something of doing, of just, of building size that's disproportionate to what's already there, to lot lines quite different than things are already laid out.
Okay, next? Anybody else done with that? Okay, what's next?
So number three, so Strategy 3, seek out affordable multifamily projects for retention as affordable housing choices for the community. Period missing. So what this one is, is basically, we have a bunch of rental housing in the city that is, it's not restricted now, maybe some of it is, some of it isn't. But as it comes up for sale, and, you know, watching out for those as opportunities to actually secure those properties as affordable housing kind of long-term. So, and I'm gonna let Arthur talk about this one, because he knows way more about this than I do.
I'll answer questions. I think he put the basic premise out there. It's something we have done in the past, but these policies, so, trying to be a little more proactive at doing that. By actually inventorying and looking at partnering and stuff like that, but I think he's described the basic concept, and these sort of get at how you might go about being more proactive in that area.
Yeah, I, I think this is a great idea that I wanna support.
We're looking at affordable housing, building new house, new stuff is never gonna catch us up, and it's very expensive. If we can maintain what we have, that's, that's the way to go. I talked to a couple groups recently that are, they're in that business, I'm sure you know them, that are trying to work with current homeowners, or small apartment owners, you know, duplex, you know, fourplex, whatever, that have, that are affordable right now, or starting to get not be. But if we can lock those in now, even if we can lock in those rents, today's rent, in the two, three years, they're gonna be very affordable, you know, in that sense. So I think this is really a brilliant thing to do, that we haven't been doing enough of it. It's happening in King County, we got some groups working now, and I'd like to really see this pursued as one of the main ways that, I think, we could get affordable housing. And I think there's a number of landlords and owners that would be, be interested in something, as long as they can keep their, and we get some subsidy for them to make up for what they would have been doing if they're jacking the rents up constantly, that they would be okay with that. So this is a, this, to me, this is a big one, and we should really pursue it strongly.
You added a wrinkle in your statements, potentially.
Yeah, I think that, rent control.
Well, no, no, no. No, no, I, no, I, no, that's not, but you're not far off, it was not rent control by any means. What he's saying is, this is, the strategy in the past is allowing someone to buy those properties who wants to keep it long-term affordable. So Clark Street and Mine Hill by Imagine Housing, which you funded and a number of other cities helped fund, are two smaller properties. And then the Housing Authority bought another property in the community a few years ago. So they now control them long-term. So it's a voluntary transaction, but you focus on those, and we've done them in other cities, same thing has happened. What you just, what you said at the very, you, you referenced that, but you also referenced the idea of actually keeping existing owners in place and giving them cash subsidies to lower their, keep their rents at a below-market rate level. So that's one in which you just pay a rent, so it's sort of like a private voucher system. The voucher system is the federally assisted, where you go out in the community and you, you know, pay the difference between market rent and what somebody low-income can afford. And so I just wanted to clarify, if you were referencing both, and both should be looked at, or if you were really referencing more the former?
Both.
Okay.
Mary Lou.
A question about that. In reading this, it was hard for me to tell exactly what the city's and taxpayers' skin in the game was on each of these bullet points. So if you could go over, are you talking about us purchasing the property with tax dollars? Are you talking about us putting in rehab into somebody else's property? So we're helping them? So if you can go through each one and say, what exactly, from a taxpayer point of view, we would be doing that, that'd be great. And then I would like to get touch on why rent control did not show up as a strategy anywhere here.
State law.
Later on. Oh, state law. That's a good one. That's easy. Okay, so what's the skin in the game here? Because I'm hearing from our community that they want this. I'm not hearing that they wanted the city to become a housing authority like the other ones that are out there. So what's our skin in the game in each of these?
Well, it's how it has been in the past. Like I said, you have helped Imagine Housing buy two existing properties that very much fit this profile. Your funds were combined with other cities and the county, and, and tax exempt bonds, and, and we, and as we, we can come back.
That's 3.2. Port organizations that are, yeah, okay.
That would be number two. And then number three is the example of where, something you're gonna be talking about later, about how the state law allows you to consider property tax exemptions for new housing, because that's what the state law allows. Seattle is leading a charge on trying to give cities the option of doing something similar for existing properties if some of the units are made affordable. So that's what number three is about. And number four is, that would be one where you are giving an existing owner some dollars for rehab in exchange for some affordability. So on all of those, if they advance, we can show you the, you know, how they are typically financed, and what local contributions potentially could be.
I guess my comment would be, anything to do with the partnerships and working with housing groups and housing experts, I'm all for us going out on our own and doing stuff.
And I don't, and I, that's good clarification. I don't think, in fact, cities aren't in a position to do that. That's one reason why Arch is what it is. We are city staff, we are local government, and it was the message out to the nonprofit world and the housing authority world, we're not gonna do anything. We're here to support you. And same with cities, so.
3.4 is the one that it seems that we're working with private property owners and just putting tax dollars in. So that's the piece where I feel like, city is then stepping into somebody else's area of expertise.
Okay.
Paula. 3.4 sounds familiar to me when I was on the Joint Recommendations Committee.
It seemed like there were, and so this does say existing county multifamily repair program.
Yes. You're more used to it being used for single-family because that's what it's primarily used for, but.
So there's a pot of money that comes from where?
Primarily federal government.
Federal government. And, and then the county through the, and through the Joint Recommendations Committee, right? And perhaps other agency, other means accepts applications, evaluates them, and there's, and they manage those programs.
Yes.
People do repair, but the, the, the skin in the game is the retention of the affordability.
What we would explore potentially in 3.4, at least for you to look at, is, and Bellevue's has this in their strategy, I mean, I'm working with a lot of cities right now with similar conversations. They want, they, they have the housing repair program and they are looking at saying, we think we want to be able to do more than can just be done with the county dollar, with the federal dollar, so we might want to add some of our own dollars on top of this program, mirror the program a lot to be targeted specifically to some needs in our community. And so what we're suggesting here is, do you want this fourth, is to say, a work with an existing owner where you typically let them keep it, okay? And all of these owners, and all of them are private, are nonprofits or private, they're not public entities, or I guess one could be the housing authority. But this last one, it's mostly saying, you're not involving long-term ownership of the project by some other player that you're used to working with. You're saying whoever that owner is, if they're will, if they have a rehab need, just like with single-family homeowners now, homeowner, if they meet the income qualifications, can get this loan and then it gets repaid later when they sell the home. With the multifamily, what they do is, if you agree to keep those units at a certain price point, that money is made available as a loan that is potentially forgiven or deferred or something like that in exchange for rehabbing it, but at the same time also keeping the rents low.
From a local tax pot, not a fed, federal tax pot.
You can't, right now, it's potentially there with the federal and the question that we would explore more is, would you want to supplement that for something local? Is there enough need? Would you want to do that? Okay, but that's something you would make calls on. But we would be looking at that program as a starting point to see if it makes any sense to do anything more than what is currently out there.
Paul?
Yeah, I'm interested in you exploring it.
Hey? Anything else?
Ready for number four?
You ready? Okay.
Okay. Number four, explore and identify additional funding options for affordable housing. Next.
You.
So 4.1, should the city evaluate current resources committed to the provision of affordable housing and explore increasing contributions? 4.2, should the city explore the dedication of non-general fund funding streams or the creation preservation of affordable housing? These could include passing of a local housing levy or development fee, supporting legislation that would expand funding tools available at the discretion of local jurisdiction, et cetera. And 4.3, should the city advocate for regional funding strategies that would supplement local affordable housing efforts?
Don't they all say, do they all say? So, first one. Sorry, Paul?
Number one says, should we measure? That's what it says to me. Should we measure?
Yes.
Measure.
No.
I mean, that's, should we evaluate current resources committed to the provision of affordable housing? So what are we, what are we putting into it now?
Yeah.
And that's all that, and so.
Right. So this is essentially the meetings you've been going to for the last two years and I'm having a heck of a time getting the third meeting scheduled, but we're, it's the meetings you've been involved with other cities to say, how are our dollars being spent through the trust fund and what are we getting and should we look at the goals that we've established for that? That's as much as anything correlates very closely to that one.
Hmm, okay.
And cities will take the joint conversation and you'll each have your own conversation and stuff, so, right.
Paul?
The only comment I have, the strategy itself starts with identify and, and most of the other ones have a little more action to them. And this one sounds like, we're going to identify and we're not going to do anything about it though. So I'd like to put the action part back into that one as well.
All right. Thank you for that.
You've looked at it long, lots of times.
So just in, oh, I'm sorry, if I may. Just in general, the, so number two, should the city explore the dedication of non-general fund funding streams for the creation preservation of affordable housing? What is this getting at? What, is there, you know, you know, we don't have a housing department, we don't, we're not a housing authority. What is, what is this, is, you know, is this creation of some other type of entity or strategy that's wholly different than we have now? Or is it just a matter of, is there some, is there some other end game here that we're just not naming?
I know you want to talk. Go ahead, Arthur.
So, again, because the last conversation was a while ago, a lot of the cities have realized their funding has been flat for lots of reasons to support housing. Now, you've used Arch as your way to get your money out on the streets, but it's still your money. This is number, number one saying, first, let's look at what you've been doing, which has been primarily through general funds and assess that goal. Number two is saying, if there's any increase, you know, any interest in either increasing or supplanting what you're doing through your general fund now through a dedicated source, would you want to do that? Now, if you grow it, you could decide to use an internal process for doing so, you could continue to use the process you have been using. That would be part of the whole conversation that would go with that. But number two is sort of saying, rather than just sort of, we take a little bit of, we take, that's right, part of our general fund every year would be to instead say, is an approach, rather to take something that feels a little more dedicated, property tax levy or a specific fund source, like a portion of sales tax, something that's sort of an identified source that sort of sets that out there. And it also states, and this is something we've come to you, about going to state legislation, about a couple of new tools, like being able to use portion of REIT or using a, Kirkland's been trying to support a demolition fee. So if someone tears down a house, you could charge a fee that could be used for affordable housing. So number two is sort of saying, is it worth exploring some other way of funding housing? And in the conversations we've been having to date with the board and with councils, that seems to have some linkage to housing. Okay, that there's sort of a correlation, like the REIT or the demolition fee or something like that. So, and, and this is just asking that question, is, should that be on the table for conversation on this overall strategy?
And so part of this is also, you know, there was, you know, as we worked through this strategy with our, our commissions, you know, part of, I think, what we learned early on was, there's no silver bullet for affordable housing. There's no one answer to get more affordable housing. It really has to be on the shoulders of everybody, so not just the developers. So there's, there's strategies that are very specific related to the development community and what their expectations would be. There's definitely strategies in here associated with processing and breaking down barriers to try and get more affordable housing. And there's also strategies in here that add more obligation to the development community. So what we looked at was a fairly holistic approach to trying to provide more affordable housing in reality within our community. This one here is definitely asking us to look at ourselves and say, is there something else we can put on the table?
And, and that's true for the first two. I just want to clarify the third one, because the, right now, for every dollar the cities are putting in, the projects cost like seven or eight times more than that, which is coming from other sources. So if you grow your amount and the other ones aren't growing, then you're not leveraging as well. So the third one is saying, and potentially look, you know, you know, understand and evaluate when opportunities for a more regional pot are being talked about, how much do you want to weigh in on supporting potentially those types of efforts? So for example, like the Veterans and Human Services Levy, which has a housing component, which is a regional source that could be landing and helping your resources get leveraged further. So the first two are the looking inward and the third one is, to help your inward look, do you also want regional sources to be looked at?
Mariah?
So number three, 4.3 specifically, well, and 4.2 is making me think about the timing for the King County Task Force that's being put together to take a look across the board at different affordable housing strategies. I'm not positive of the timing on how soon that, that would come forward. I know in the last Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee, we went around and talked about different, different ideas or things that would be helpful. And my understanding is that they're going to put together all of the strategies from all the different cities, so I'm, but I'm not positive about the timing.
So the timing, so there's two elements of timing related to that committee. In general, the timeframe for that committee is the next year up to the end of next year. So they, potentially that much time. Now, in the meantime, the county council is looking at two programs that would create funding for housing. One is the Vets and Human Services Levy, which, did they do the final vote on that? They've, in the last week or they're about to? I believe that's now been finalized as of last week and that has set aside. And then they're also talking about potentially next year, a sales tax provision under state law that also relates to certain forms of housing. And so while they may use the task force for that, they have timeframes potentially in their mind that during the course of the task force, there may be some specific initiatives advanced by the county council to go to the electorate to consider before the end of that task force is done.
Okay.
So it's a little bit of both.
Okay. All right, thank you. Five? Hello? Are we ready for five? Okay.
So number five is facilitate the development of transit-oriented development. 5.1, should the city support application for other funding sources for potential TOD project? 5.2, should the city use existing tools, e.g. MFTE, multifamily tax exemption, et cetera, to take more direct action to support, enhance the affordability component of the transit-oriented development project and increase competitiveness for other public funding assistance?
It's kind of hanging.
I saw that. Sorry.
Well, it might be that we want to see, we have a, don't we have a perfect potential project?
We do.
That helps us decide whether we want to do more. But I think we've just made the statement that we're very, very interested in that.
Yes.
Or maybe not quite, coming up, what we're making a more definite statement about, about whether we are or not with the MOU consideration. But I don't, I'm not sure, but I think by the time we revisit this proposed draft, affordable housing part of the housing strategy will be more informed.
Yep.
Marilu?
Yeah, and we talked about this in another context as well, which is that that's a proposal, we know a little bit about it, but I had asked you at some point during this whole housing strategy discussion to show us a table about how TOD projects compared to historical projects that we had. What is the city of Issaquah dollar put in per unit? What is the city of Issaquah dollar that's leveraged against a grant dollar or a special loan from housing or whatever? So we need that sort of table, I think, in order to answer this question. And I think I gave you all the headings.
So just for your information, I had just sent raw data for not only your projects, but some other TOD-type projects that have been done in East King County in the last 10 years. So that data has been forwarded to your staff to organize and I think has the type of information you asked for.
It was a slightly different table that I asked for. So it was our TOD proposal versus not other TOD proposals? It was our TOD proposal versus other Issaquah?
Other Issaquah affordable housing, but we also thought it might be helpful
Very helpful.
To have some other communities, what they've done in this kind of situation where they controlled land.
What it looks like. That would be great.
So we did both.
Awesome.
Since I don't see any of my staff, could you send it to Jan?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a reason MFTE is only mentioned here?
I thought it was mentioned in one other place.
It, um. I apologize if I missed it.
No, it, it. A lot of little text. And so I think it, it might have been only in one other place, back in four or three.
So we didn't, I don't think we specific, so we talked about other funding strategies, but I don't think we specifically identified MFTE anywhere other than here. I think part of staff's maybe conservative approach to identifying MFTE is the fact that we have not done that yet. And rather than lace all the strategies with MFTE, not knowing whether or not the council's tolerance level for doing that, we limited it specifically just to the transit-oriented development project at this time. But I think there's definitely, if that, if the council ultimately has a greater tolerance for using MFTE, then it could apply to a lot of the other strategies as well.
So just a general ask, I do recall, maybe it was a year ago, maybe sometime a year or two ago, Arthur, when you did, were here and did give us a presentation, maybe when we kicked all this off. And there was a table of all the various tools and what cities were using them and a little bit of information about them. We need to resurrect that. I, I did a quick look for that and I, and just bad bookkeeping, I guess, I couldn't find that. If you know what meeting it's from, but I think getting that as an appendix or something added to this packet of information would be very helpful.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
More?
Ready for six?
Hey?
Six. Increase the developer-provided affordable housing in Central Issaquah. 6.1, should the city look to increase the inclusionary requirements in Central Issaquah? How many units could this create and would there be unintended consequences? And 6.2, should the city continue to support provisions allowing for fee in lieu of and other forms of alternative compliance? So two very distinct pieces related to developer obligations for affordable housing.
So I thought it was very interesting that this was the only one that I noticed that there was actually the question of, well, if we do, what could the potential consequences be? Every, this is the only one in here that I saw.
Only one that has consequences.
Well, yeah.
So, so is that a comment that all of them should include the consequences for enacting?
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, these all need to be evaluated. I think what you're, you know, these are comments and feedbacks. I don't know that any of us, you know, work in any of these fields and know the answer. But yeah, just, I think just a general comment I have is just because you're getting feedback doesn't mean that they don't need to be actually evaluated because our feedback is not an evaluation, generally speaking, of whether it's.
Going to work or not.
For sure, exactly, going to work.
Understood.
Okay.
Question about inclusionary?
Mm-hmm.
So why just Central Issaquah? I thought one of the questions during the moratorium and why it was a citywide moratorium was because we were talking about affordable housing citywide.
So, so we are. So there is state statute that says you can only put inclusionary on property that, that has been basically, has gained value, so upzoned. And because the council has been fairly clear that they intend for all, as much new housing as possible to be in Central Issaquah, the idea of you guys upzoning the periphery to get inclusionary included, but allowing more units to go in the periphery seemed like that was against where you guys were at least pointed. So, so here, because of the upzone for Central Issaquah, for both the core and outside the core, we've been having conversations with the city attorney about whether we could increase the amount of inclusionary. Right now, it's 10% in the core and it's zero outside the core. And the conversations we've been having is, has that rezone been recent enough that we could actually up those numbers? And what we talked about, and I, I left early, so tell me if I'm wrong. I think what we were talking about was going from 10 to 15 in the core and going from zero to seven outside the core.
So, can I try to describe it a little differently?
Sure. Knock yourself out.
So you have both, and the core is the one area where you have a mandatory, starting from unit one. And then in both areas, you have a bonus amount, right? If you go above a certain level, above the base, then a portion of that is affordable housing. So the question becomes, is there a way of taking the combination of the core that you have, requirement you have now and the bonus that you have that's voluntary and somehow use that capacity or portions of that capacity to create a more mandatory approach throughout Central Issaquah? Percentages are going to be based on how much of capacity you're creating and it varies depending on where you land if you want to take that approach. So what this is asking is looking at bringing back a modeling exercise for you that sort of simply explains, take your, compare your existing approach and how much affordability you get depending on how much they build under the base and under the maximum, and then compare it to some options where if you changed your rules, that you could then ask for a mandatory for any project regardless of size in both areas. So that's, and we're looking at trying to do it in a way, give you options to look at that would allow you to get greater in the core, a bit more in the core, and then some level of mandatory outside the core of Central Issaquah.
So this is all new and shocking and disappointing. This has not ever come to council before in this format, that we could not do inclusionary zoning throughout the city or that we weren't considering doing that kind of zoning in areas outside Central Issaquah. So this is, this floors me, that those are the numbers that we're talking about. And if, if what we did was make a mistake three years ago and give away our ability to do this by, by only having a small area with inclusion. this by, by only having a small area with inclusionary zoning, we took a huge tool out of the toolbox.
So I think you're thinking about that backwards. So, so what the state statute says is if you're willing to upzone, you can put an inclusionary requirement on.
We did upzone significantly. 7,000 housing units, big.
In central Issaquah, we did, and so that's why this strategy is limited to central Issaquah.
So, so we're looking at trying to bring you models that for all of central Issaquah would have a requirement approach.
So...
What Keith was explaining is outside central Issaquah, CIP area, we weren't at this point looking, because you'd need to do further rezoning outside of the entire, you know, in the outlying areas of the city.
Oh, so before I go to you, Tola, explain that a little. So you mentioned looking at the zoning that we did and see if it was recent enough that we could do the inclusionary, is that what you said?
Yes. There's a, there's, so you can add an inclusionary requirement when you upzone, right? So what we're, so the legal question that's been asked is because we're not upzoning anybody right now...
We did two weeks ago. We didn't include anything.
Let him finish.
So because we're not upzoning anybody right now, us putting inclusionary on anybody has a legal, there's, there could be a legal challenge, right? And so the conversations we've been having with the city attorney is, is there still a thread to the upzone from central Issaquah that we could change the inclusionary requirements in central Issaquah? And, and Arthur described some of the methodology that we would use to justify that, and right now, the city attorney believes that yes, up to a certain point, we can say yes, we can increase the amount of inclusionary within central Issaquah, but not outside unless the council wants to entertain upzoning areas outside central Issaquah.
Okay, Tola?
Yes. I would like to hear more about the option of inclusionary housing in the central area. Not sure I want to do it, but I sure want to hear more about it.
Anything else? Okay.
Number seven, mitigate, offset the deterrence to condominium construction. All right. So background here is, so we're out of vacant land, right? We're out of greenfields, everything that's, every, almost all new housing that's going to be built is going to be in stack flat configurations, mostly in the valley floor or in other places. Nobody's building condominiums in Issaquah right now, and a lot of it has to do with defect litigation, and builders just don't want to deal with it, and there's, so they go ahead and, so apartments are likely what we're going to see. And so part of that, getting back to that, that comment about starter homes and providing, you know, condominiums are typically a lower price point than a single-family attached or detached home is. And so if we're not getting any because the builders are afraid of litigation, then the question on the table is should we do something to see if we can't change that dynamic? So 7.1 is should the city take an interest in the ownership rental composition of its housing? 7.2, should the city commit its lobbying resources to monitor and support state legislation to address condominium construction? 7.3, should the city commit resources to the research, including utilization by other cities in the state and in other states such as Colorado? So there's a number of cities in Colorado that have actually passed legislation locally to try and offset this issue of local provisions impacting condominium development. And four, should the city seek out measures, including looking at city code, to facilitate the construction of new condominium projects?
Bill?
Yeah, and interesting situation, because in talking to various builders, they're not going to touch condos with a 10-foot pole, but they, they would love to do them, but they're not going to because of the legal problems. And I'm not sure of all the legal problems, but I think we should, we should work with others, because it's a state issue, it's not by any means an Issaquah issue, to see what can be done to allow that to be an option, because it, it would provide us another array of housing that is needed. So the encouragement of working with others across, you know, King County and the state to, to make changes there would, I would like to see for sure.
Sorry, Tola, I was reading.
So yes, on 7.2, 7.3, and 7.4, what does 7.1 really mean? Should the city take an interest in the ownership rental composition of its housing?
So, so, you know, part of these strategies, you know, we, we sat around with our, you know, commissions and our focus groups, and, and we came up with these, and, and you guys might say, you know what? Let the market do whatever it wants to do. If, if it's going to build apartments for the next 20 years in Issaquah, fine. So the one, the first one is just litmus test, is, you know, does this matter to us, what our, what our ownership and rental composition looks like 20 years from now? And, and I think it's just a easy, well, it's maybe not an easy question, but...
So if you say no to 7.1, you have to say no to 7.2, 7.3, and 7.4. All right. Well, I say yes to all four then, because, I mean, I think what you want to do is you want to create an environment where builders can build what they want to build, and if they can't build condos right now because of bizarre laws out of Olympia, you want to free that up, right? You're not necessarily saying thou shalt go, go do this, but if, if we can put another tool in their toolkit, then amen.
So, so I think Keith summarized well, it is really a basic question, but we just wanted to put it out there. And I will let you know that the way this is materialized, why, it's amazing how, again, I'm working on five strategy plans right now, and this has been rising to the top in East King County, and it's from two different directions. One, you're getting a lot of development in your cores, which you always wanted, but it's all rental. And people say, wouldn't it be nice to have, when you're done, a mixture of ownership and rental, balanced community? The second is, it's a response to creating affordable ownership, but people realize that that is the most affordable form of ownership that you can get through new housing, and it's not being done, and it doesn't feel like it's not being done now because of market forces, it's being done because of some constraint to market forces. And I am hearing this in every town I am going to right now, this concern. And so, so I think the first question is, does that, do those reasons ring true to you as well, that we've heard from your joint commissions as well as across Eastside?
Well, I guess I will just say that I can't tell you the exact conversations, but I, the assumption I had was never, this was going to be a mix in central Issaquah of ownership and rental. It was going to be apartments. So this isn't, to me, this isn't like new, I mean, this is something that we should have addressed five years ago. I'm not saying I support it, these kinds of conversations aren't ones that we should have had.
Okay, we ready for eight? So eight, incorporate code provisions to increase the potential diversity of housing types built in the city. So this one's kind of open-ended. 8.1, should the administration research regulation, regulatory and permit provisions incorporated by other peer jurisdictions in East King County and the region for smaller forms of alternative housing that would fit in Issaquah? I think some examples of those are SROs, micro units, cottages, other things that right now, our code doesn't say you can do those, and the question is, is looking at how many tweaks it would take to actually get some of those things to happen here if we think that's appropriate. And 8.2 is conduct an assessment of potential suitability of alternative forms of similar housing in different neighborhoods.
Smaller.
I say what?
Smaller.
Smaller?
Yes.
Oh, smaller, sorry. It's getting late, apparently. So yeah, so, so question number one is, is kind of look and see, you know, what kind of code changes would be necessary to get really smaller units to be able to be built? And then 8.2 would be kind of do an assessment of what the implementation of that might look like. So, you know, how much, what would be the capacity, how, how much of that could then take place within our neighborhoods?
And this, DeClerk, because this is something the joint commission talked a bit about, this was definitely one where the comment you made at the very beginning, Councilor Pauli, about different neighborhoods are different, and this one, at sort of two levels, there's sort of a differentiation between neighborhoods. One is those forms that might fit in multifamily neighborhoods, i.e. the micro units, versus those that would fit more in single-family or lower-density neighborhoods like cottages. And then for each one of those, it wasn't universal. They said especially for the single-family, it might really depend on the character of the single-family neighborhood, and then for the multifamily, they were talking about access to transit might be a really important consideration, so it wouldn't necessarily be all multifamily. So those are what one and two are, one is getting at the range and two is getting to that neighborhood scale that really saw that playing out potentially different throughout the city.
So I'd sort of be curious to see what my fellow council members feel like. This feels sort of like a bridge too far right now. I feel like we've had all these other great strategies that are worth investigating that could have a profound impact, and some of the things that are in this one, I feel like are the kinds of things that you do when you're Hong Kong, and, you know, it's 10,000 bucks for four square meters, kind of a thing. But again, I, I sort of curious what my fellow council members feel. I feel like, I thought I had an infinite appetite for options around workforce housing, but I may have found my, I may have found my satiation point.
Well, I, I don't know that we can do a housing strategy without at least touching on and evaluating, I guess, some of the, would have become the more popular, I'll say maybe affordable types of housing in other areas, those, you know, single rooms and, you know, micro stuff. I'm not saying necessarily for it, but I think it's part of what we need to understand, how other jurisdictions are maybe addressing it. On the flip side, I heard, don't know if it's true, but I would like to know if it's true, so I add this to maybe some questions, and that is that I've heard that one of the reasons that apartments are so scarce and so expensive in Seattle is because some of the big tech companies are leasing them even though they're, and they're keeping them vacant for their new employees or people who are doing their internships. So...
Just want to make sure I'm understanding your question. You think that some new buildings are being leased directly by companies?
No.
Okay.
That, that some of the big tech, maybe it's Amazon, Google is what I'm hearing, are, or Google and, is that right?
Amazon.
Okay. Are, are leasing up vacant units, not necessarily whole buildings?
Right.
So that they have apartments available for their interns, new employees, and that is having an effect on the amount, the number of, yeah, the number available.
We can check into that.
Okay.
I agree with Stacy that it's worth investigating. I do, it is, I believe, an emerging idea, and we should take a look at it.
Which, which one? Taking up all the occupant, vacant?
No, 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 no.
Or, or these different types of...
I wasn't repeating your question, I was, I was doing a plus one on the first part of your comment.
Okay, okay, good enough.
Okay. Last one, number nine, support housing, support housing options and services to enable people to stay in their homes or neighborhoods, e.g., adapting housing, home sharing, group homes as long as possible. So this one, and this one, of all the strategies, for me, this one needs to get baked a little bit more. You know, when we looked at all the strategies and, and we had some conversations after we put them all together, it was like we're kind of missing one that deals kind of more with homeless and special needs, and so this one's intended to kind of hit that part of our housing needs, probably more than the other ones. So I'll go ahead and read nine, one through four. So nine, one, identify housing options that allow persons with special housing needs, e.g., group homes, to ensure there is accommodation within the city to allow such forms of housing. Nine point two, provide support to housing targeted to those living with special housing needs and have limited incomes. Nine point three, identify types and availability of services that enable residents with special needs to remain in their housing or community, help to increase awareness of existing programs, and provide further support to agencies providing support. And nine point four, determine the specific needs of and support services for homeless individuals and families. So?
Don't we already have nine point? Identify housing options, but then the second part, as in, and ensure there is accommodation within the city to allow such forms of housing. Don't we already allow?
Probably, but... Excuse me. Most likely, but it might be a, sort of a checking to make sure. Forms of housing change a little bit over time and just, you know, so it's sort of a check-in almost, but your point's well made.
Are we talking about like Leo houses?
Yes, but there may be other forms of housing too that people with special needs are looking, forms, but yes, that's the best, that's a good example.
Okay. It just seemed to me we already allowed.
Yes, right.
Bill?
Yeah, just, I was kind of getting confused a little bit on the title of this versus the ones, because the way I read it, the first thing jumped in my mind on nine is property taxes for folks that are on fixed income, and I, you know, that, to stay in their home, because it says basically to stay in their home or neighborhood, and I'm sitting here going, 20 years from now, I don't know if I can afford the taxes on my home that I have, and I won't be able to stay there even if that's my plan. So that's the first thing that jumped in my mind on that title, and then the, the strategies got into basically, you know, people with special needs and homeless and everything else. So I, I think those are, are good things to have, but I don't, I think that other item that I'm thinking of is, is something too, because I think a lot of folks, the way things are going and the way we're a little longer, and, you know, my income, or my property taxes went up $200 a month, this year alone, I'm not going to be able to sustain that for, you know, 20 years. So where, you know, staying in your home to me is, is important in a number of ways and not just these ones listed right here.
So nine point three, while not saying that, could say that. And so, in other words, it's a pretty, this one, as Keith said, really gets pretty broad in how you might interpret each of those different statements. So your kind of statements now about things that come to your mind when this general theme comes to you, it can be meal programs, like, you know, right? Meal programs for seniors, like the home delivery of meals, things like that, could be potentially included with, I mean, I think are within the scope potentially of this one. So if that's something that you think is worth further exploring, we can call that out per se, I mean, in the work.
So like, I agree with Bill. I thought what this might be doing is some sort of homesteading provision, which would be that increases due to increased assessed valuation would be held until sale of the house, new levies and bonds would be assessed against the house but not collected until the sale of the house. That's what I thought this was doing too. So, and I really, really support that. I think that's excellent option.
Right.
And I just, more generally, when, when I was looking at this as well, I, I agree that we should be, I, I think this is great, and we should be looking into these areas because I think there's different even legislative issues that, that might come into play there, but that we're not specifically talking about seniors or, or people that are, that are trying to stay in their homes long-term. So just expanding that.
And so, I think, I go back to what Keith said, that maybe this one needed, needs some more work, because I think there's a lot in here, and, you know, a couple of council members, I thought that what this said, when I see things like support several times, I'm, I get a little, I get a little red flag, a little concerned about, to me, support can be potentially subsidies, and if we start adding up all the subsidies that we might need to get everything that we want, then that has a budget impact as well, and so I think we have to be very thoughtful when we, when we do that, you know? Bill?
This language crosses into human services.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it's very good, I think, for us to understand the relationship between the provision of these human services and what it means to housing and people's life circumstances. I'm okay with you bringing that in, I think that's actually very important. And if, under, because there are service providers out there, you, you mentioned meals and homes, for example, that, and, and just like a regular transit service, there's a lot of different things that can contribute to allow somebody to age in place, along with homesteading, for example, from the cost side. And, and so, so I think this then takes our strategy, and I, and I'm going to go all the way back to that vision, because... vision, because I think the people and the families that you're touching upon in this element right there are, oh, very much so envisioned in what's in the form of the vision statement that you gave us originally. So I think some form of this should be, but I agree as well that the element, as Mary Lou called it, homesteading, the idea of the, that Bill mentioned as well, it should be incorporated somehow. So I agree with you, it needs more work, but I do like the fact that it's human services.
Okay, let's do the strategies. What else?
That's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Any other comments?
No.
Mary Lou had said she has general comments.
Yeah, no, I love general comments.
General. This probably has to do more with what a future document might look like, but I thought at one time we had talked about making sure we had our strategies broken down into categories that we're either maintaining, enhancing, or creating, because maintaining and enhancing deal with existing stock and cover some of those strategies. Creating is something different, that's new stock. The piece that was really hard for me to get my head around was that the vision statement didn't seem very clear right now. And there isn't also sort of, we're not starting from the point of where we are and why we're doing this, and so we need to see our housing scorecard in that back piece that you're talking about. We need to see a map of what the city looks like and where our current density in housing stock is. We need to see the survey results, what questions were asked, who answered, what the roundtable forums were made up of, so we understand what the community conversation would look like. And then when we get to evaluation, we need to impact, we need to know what the impact is of the application of each one of these two, neighborhood character and actual housing stock that could be created or preserved. Because I think the last version of a chart we got from Arthur and Arch showed that we were down somewhere in the teens in affordable housing in the city. And when we're talking about mechanisms that are only going to get a seven or 10% of more stock, we might as well just lower our goals, because our aspirational goal of 40% is ludicrous. So we need to structure this so we can tell a story, see what the impact of these strategies are. And my last point is that part of this is tied up in the moratorium, and there absolutely has to be something actionable in the strategy on the central ISQA before the moratorium is released. And so it's not about talking about what we might do in two years. I don't see it that way. My personal opinion is that people are expecting that the next units that get built will get built with a different housing strategy than what we're using right now. And so many of these things have years and years of time to be talked about, central ISQA part does not. If we want that moratorium released, we have to deal with the affordable housing piece before the moratorium is released. My opinion.
Bill?
That's basically, I was going to build on the latter part of that, because after, this page is the action page, which says, you know, adopt code revision in 2018, 2019, and, and basically saying the same thing, that we have to do some things for, to lift the moratorium, this is one of our six issues, right? So we've got to do something actionable fairly shortly. What we, where we draw that line, I don't know, because there's some, there's some big vision things we have that can't be done in the next six months probably. But how do we separate those out and get as much done now so we can lift that moratorium is very important to me, too. So look at, you know, and we'll help you, you're going to help us look at those things and how we could get some of those things done quicker and which are more easily, more easily done so that we can implement.
Mariah?
So I'm going to go back to my original comment, that sometimes it helps me to look at all of the strategies and then look back at the vision. And I think to Mary Lou's point about, you know, pulling words out of, you know, the comp plan and, and putting that together, like when I try to look at vision, I often just say, why? Why are we, why are we doing this? Why are we talking about this? And we, we just talked about some really important points, like aging in place, developing starter homes for maybe there are, you know, college kids that are trying to get a job here and they're moving back in, or people that are moving back, you know, to be near their parents and giving the ability for people to live and work in ISQA. And those are things that we've talked so much about, and in terms of workforce housing, but yet in our vision, we're kind of using generic words, and it seems to me like we might want to, you know, dial that in about why, why are we doing a housing strategy? Because we would really like to see this, this, and this, so.
So it seems to me like, to me anyway, one of the key questions goes back to the, I don't remember which one it was, that talked about inclusionary zoning, whether we can do it. And I think we need to know the answer to that question pretty quickly. It has to do with central ISQA plan area. If we, I mean, if, if, it seems kind of key, you know, either we can...
Yes, so...
So we can't.
So of all the things that we've dialed up, you know, that one and the code revision to that one, that one's easy.
If we can do it.
Yeah, we can do it. We've had enough conversations with the city attorney.
Oh, so I didn't hear that. I heard we're having conversations and...
No, we're there, I think we're there.
Okay.
We just need to write code. And we'll take, that will go through PPC as well.
Bill?
I wanted to thank you guys. I learned quite a bit with this package of material. It is multi-dimensional. It's in that there is, there are different concepts brought in related, and puts them all together in a single presentation. It was very helpful, thank you. It clearly is a work in process. There isn't a silver bullet. I agree with, some reality is certainly set in it as well. It was kind of disappointing to learn that this idea of inclusionary housing was limited in our ability to use that tool. That is what it is. It's unfortunate, but we do, so it makes even the rest of these strategies that much more important, because we're going to be more reliant upon other tools than, than maybe making these, this required outside of the central area.
And I think one of the things that, that you guys said early on, which we're key on as well, is, you know, part of this is developing, you know, that, that forecast of, you know, we implement these nine things, what can you expect to see that's different, you know, two, three, four years from now? And coming up with some of those numbers so that we can actually start to look at that year after year and see, are we making a difference or not? And if we are great, maybe we need to keep doing that, and maybe we need to add more things as we go. Bill?
Mariah?
And I just wanted to bring up one more time, in case I wasn't clear earlier, when we were talking with Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee, we were talking about the, the task force and, and what, what information could be provided to the task force. And the question that was asked was, what sort of help, you know, would, would you like to see? And I talked very generically at that time about we were working on a housing strategy and being able to see what other cities were doing. But a lot of the cities, even in the Public Issues Committee notes from the last program, a lot of people gave like their top five, which really wasn't the question, but a lot of people did that. But they were all going to coordinate all the best plans from all the cities, and it sounded like that was all, that information was all going to come in pretty much right away. So if we wanted to give some of our, you know, best strategies so far, there's lots of even smaller cities that, that could use that help, but some of that information might be available, and maybe you already know all of that and have seen all of that, but there just might be a golden nugget out there that we haven't uncovered, so.
I think, Mary Lou?
Just a final clarification. Keith, when you present the data that comes with the supporting documentation, let's be really clear this time on what is deed protected, one time, one owner protected? Because there's a lot of confusion in the community based on comments they've heard on camera about exactly how much affordable housing we have. And we need to get the, we need to get those facts out clearly to the community, and it's not, it hasn't been very clear in the past, so. In particular, I'm talking about the stock that is one time affordable and then reverts to market rate, which is a significant number.
Yes, we can, I think we can kind of note that and allege it on the map so that we can have a clear sense for what's long-term protected versus short-term.
Because I think short-term protected really, one thing I did not see here at all is that if we have used certain strategies in the past and they haven't worked, we didn't actually talk about that was, and I would consider the one time affordable to be something we should never be considering again. Not to make the document negative, but that was not a very good approach, and it actually, in the long term, it's just not a good approach. And I'm not sure if there's any of those other ideas out there, that we have been trying things and they haven't worked, and just to be clear, where we are and what has worked and what is not, I don't want to see the one term, ever, one time affordable ever come back into the strategy. I don't think that's a good idea.
Other comments? Okay, yep, as has already been said by a couple of council members, thank you very much. For detailed information, thanks for coming, Arthur. Next on our agenda, architectural fit and urban design, also regarding the development moratorium, we have our consultant here, Don Arambula.
Is it a PowerPoint, Don?
No.
Do we want to?
Oh.
I think we want to take a five-minute break, please.
Let the pool can warm up a little bit here.
I'm eager. It's like you want to get home or something. Hey, we're back.
Lucy Sloman, Land Development Manager from DSD. I just want to give a brief introduction to our consultant, Don Arambula, from Crandall Arambula in Portland, who is working on our Architectural Fit and Urban Design Manual. The last time Don was in front of you was in April and we are now in the process of reviewing the first draft of the manual with the Development Commission. Don's going to give you kind of an overlook of where we are. Following, in the next week or two, we're going to compile all the comments and then work with them on a final draft, which will come back to us in August and start through the process. So this, I think I would say, is an important opportunity just to catch you up with the approach and the work that's been done and get your input as we're getting ready to prepare that final draft.
Great, thank you. Again, this is item 2C on our agenda, Architectural Fit and Urban Design Regarding the Development Moratorium. Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome back.
It's good to see you all again. So there's been a lot happening since then, but I don't want to let you think that this is nothing new and we haven't listened to in the past or the community. So just a little bit of backtracking and going back over the ground that we went over before. So really want to do is do this presentation. You can interrupt me as I go through this, please, and then discussion and then talk about what the next steps are. So again, here's the project understanding of what our charge was when we started this project to develop this manual. And there were really three work items. Assess the Isqwa Plan, which we did, then look at complimentary architecture and urban design standards, which really is what we've landed on, something that is very prescriptive, not, and is very mandatory. That's what we're looking at. And then suggest some administrative staff and commission project review adjustments. So we've got, well, we're going to talk about this checklist is really is a form of organizing and putting a box around this. So that's one of the, kind of the unique things that we're adding to this so it's clearer for, for the applicants, the commission, and the public to understand the role of architectural fit and urban design. So we don't have people coloring outside the lines, if you will. So just coming back and looking at the schedule again, as we talked to you back in April 10th, seems like even longer than that ago, but in that, we talked about the general comments of what we've heard. And this is really kind of a touchdown as we went through this because in the end, if we can't address what we heard positively, maybe we're not successful here. So we heard that the districts are not unique and the development is generic. So we wanted to nail this so that it becomes central to the history and the character of Isqwa and isn't placeless. And so then the other one was that the new buildings weren't consistent with the structures in the older towns of areas. So we were looking for ways to be more sympathetic to Old Town and other areas that are, people recognize of what is Isqwa character. So we wanted to do that. And then finally, there was this piece in, it affects the urban design. What's the green necklace was amorphous and not all that well-defined in the central Isqwa Plan. And if we could ground that and provide some more definition to what that green necklace is on a project review basis, one by one, not try to do a new parks plan or something else like that, but how does a developer or an architect respond to this notion of a green necklace? We wanted to touch on that. So in the meantime, we did some visual assessment and really wanted to talk about what was the, what ended up being is what is the Isqwa style? What really defines this area and what is an appropriate response to that? So this is a slide that I have. There's a whole series of other bullets in here, but that was really the key one of those. And so we looked at all of these issues as we went through this. So what we tried to do is with Central Isqwa is really break it into two areas. And one of these character areas or sub-districts or style areas that we've developed was an area on the eastern portion, we called that the Isqwa style. And that largely took in Gilman, Darce Park, and East Lake, the areas adjacent to Old Town and some of your established neighborhoods that are to the east. And also on the west side, the Western Gateway. And so with that, we developed some prescriptive guidelines to ensure that the new development is sympathetic to historic character of Isqwa and complement its natural setting. And so what we found through research and looking at when the development of the community occurred, which is anywhere from 1910 to 1930 historically, what are the kinds of styles that we could offer? And so what we wanted to do is offer a menu, not to say you just got to do craftsmen, 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 because of scale and the type of development not necessarily lends themselves to these four. So what we'd also like to do is really encourage mixing these four elements so that if you've got a 20-acre site and you've got 20 buildings, it's not all craftsmen because that creates some monotony. And we'd like to really encourage mixing where it makes some sense. Not everywhere, but there might be some rationale to do that. So when we talk about those characteristics, we talked, for example, like what is craftsmen? It's house-like, it's typically not more than four stories. It doesn't translate well to a 10-story building. So nobody's going to ever build a 10-story building. And then it's usually single uses. So craftsmen works best if it's not a vertically mixed-use building. So it's something that you prefer that you don't use it that way. And it has these characteristics and you can read all that. I won't get into the detail, but there's some description of that. And then we moved on to the second style was very similar to this. We called it loosely Arts and Crafts. And so that again, has a lot of house characteristics and it's typically shorter as well, typically three stories. But the difference between this and craftsmen is that adapts better for vertically mixed-use projects. So you can get retail on the ground floor, which is something that I think is one of the objectives on many of the quarters or focus areas or nodes of the Central Isqwa Plan. And so you get these elements, different roof types, a little bit steeper, mixing of elements like brick and stucco and wood and other things like that. Then we worked on a couple of other styles because there was a sense that we need something that's larger. So if we've got craftsmen that works well for three to four stories, what happens if you get a five-story building or a six-story building? And maybe it's larger. And so we said to be, to be more sympathetic to your community, maybe there is a lodge style. So we said, all right, these are fairly similar, they're bigger buildings, and they adapt better for something that's longer and taller. So trying to keep in that family again. And then we moved on to a final one, which is Western Falls, Falls Front Style, which is mostly a commercial building, the things that you see typically along Front Street today. So if you had a commercial corridor, smaller-scale buildings, up to four stories, this would be something that we would expect to see as well. So again, another variety of uses that we'd have. So with that, then we looked at your more intense area, the urban core area, where you could anticipate getting larger buildings and buildings that maybe not as rigorous in terms of responding to the context. In a sense, a lot of these areas, you want to reinvent the context. It's largely auto-oriented development and as you get into more pedestrian-oriented development and maybe a block-scale development, there is a unique style that we've loosely called Northwest Contemporary for this area that is more urban, but still has elements that are historically appropriate for the Pacific Northwest. So what we looked at that is here's a definition, descriptive and prescriptive elements for this area. And then we then described this not in types of building types, but the elements of the building itself because it's one style, if you will. So we're talking about form, massing, scale, materials, and color. So you see, what we want to do is have a vertical emphasis and a street wall so that we break up the mass of this by thinking about terms like rhythm and changes in form and massing so that it occurs not only horizontally but vertically. So there's some basic things that we'd like to have with the building, such as what's often called a tripartite expression. So we've got tops, middle, and base with an emphasis on the base. Talk about the pedestrian realm especially. So when we get residential development, how can we activate that? Whether it's through mixed-use commercial at the base or if it's housing alone, what can you do to make that more welcoming as for somebody walking by? And then talk about the scale, especially along critical environmental areas. If we get larger buildings, how can we step back, for example, and also look at pedestrian corridors and other open spaces? So what we'd like to see is if you get taller buildings, stepping back as what you see here. And then talking about materials. So the key of this is really to develop a palette of materials that are timeless. So we want to avoid trendy materials that will seem dated over the coming years. Think of it as like a, buildings that are like a Cadillac with fence. We don't want to see those that tell you that's a 1950s Cadillac. We want to have buildings that will be as relevant today and in the future and so that they're not becoming sort of pastiche or trendy types of architecture. So they'll age well, if you will. And so what we're looking at on that is something that is durable and long-lasting and so we're suggesting wood and brick cladding. So you can have infill and highlights, whether it's stucco or metal panel or additional windows at key areas, but generally, we're looking at a composition that is heavily weighed towards wood or brick. For example, if you look at percentages, we'd say 75% brick or wood on the building. And other elements would be the minor component of that. So here's another example of wood that we looked at. These would be really the sort of transition areas that we're looking for. So as you transition away from the Isqwa style, as you transition away from your green corridors, we would anticipate to have more wood elements. And there's a guideline that, a standard rather, that really talks about where these sorts of things need to be considered. Where would you use wood as opposed to brick? And then finally, color. So what we'd like to do is really establish a signature color expression so that we avoid blue buildings, red buildings, red roofs, green roofs, weird colors. And so we want to keep it toned down so that the buildings, what we would describe as become largely a composition of, to use a lack of a better word, background buildings, rather than every building fighting for attention, so that the overall composition of your downtown is more important than any individual building, with the exception of public buildings, where you have a library or City Hall. That's a place for architectural exuberance and not necessarily a commercial building. So here's an example of a darker brick and here's an example of lighter brick and darker infill. So these are the kind of ideas that are with, that were discussed. In terms of urban design, there were some really key connections and routes that wanted to be discussed and strengthened. So the idea from site planning was really is to try to unify some of these disparate areas that where you've got pods of development that are separated by large roadways. And so there's a degree of unity to it. So as you develop a streetscape through block passages, connections along greenways, that you start tying these all together. And so the intent was that this district should be a place that you arrive at, not simply pass through. And so how can we make this a destination? Through individual design of each project. So the idea and the things that we talked about is a concentration as a core, a centroid, if you would, within that urban core. And then thinking about some of your key streets, whether it's Gilman or other streets that you would want to have some elements that really reimagine segments of that street as a rival destination, recognizing that it serves as a major arterial roadway, but maybe there's areas within that where you don't simply drive through, but you arrive at it. So there's some ideas about what that could occur as part of site design. And then open space. What is the, the public around emphasis? And so we, through the standards, we're talking about street-oriented or stream-oriented. What is the front door in a sense, if you will? And how do you deal with each of these when you're trying to design all sides of a building? And one of the core ideas was is that, and what makes the central Isqwa district unique compared to other places is the green space. It's amenity. And it should not be thought as a, something that you have to mitigate, but something that you should celebrate and make it more of an asset. And so whatever is done here, I think if you could walk away with a one big win, would be the way to strengthen the idea about your green spaces, whether it's hillsides or creeks or trails, and make sure that that is a central component of every design that has within that impact zone of your, of your Central Isqwa subarea. So after that meeting where we talked about these sorts of visual assessment ideas, we came back with a draft outline for the manual. And since then, we've had a series of touchpoints with staff to talk about the draft manual. As you can see, these black dots in June. And we're back here tonight to talk to you about that outlined draft. So let me just go through that fairly quickly as well. So I wanted to come back and talk to you about something that we talked to you a little bit earlier, and this is about predictability. And so the idea to get really good design is to create as much certainty or predictability through the manual and through the process so that everybody understands how it works. So the first piece of this would be to create a complete plan. And you've already got two pieces of this, which is your vision statements in the Central Isqwa Plan. Essentially, the high-level ideas, you've got zoning districts. And the intent of this is really not to replicate any of those two documents, but really focus on the architectural fit and of, of architecture and the urban design and then strategically come back into the zoning districts and extract the things that might be duplicate or better served in this document. So with these three, you really've got the full plan. You've got the three pieces that, and the third piece of this was really missing. And so then the other part of this is really is the rules are clear and objective. And as we mentioned, it's prescriptive and some people may not like that, but it really, you, you've set out the idea that this is what we want to have and there's not a lot of wiggle room. So the sense was the development projects that you had had too much variability and flexibility. And so what we're trying to do is nail it on the safe side to say, here is what we want, and really limit the amount of flexibility. And then finally, the process for project approval is streamlined. And I talked about that and being able to use this as a tool effectively, and it comes down to this checklist piece that you see here. So these all have to be, we need to be able to use this tool in a rational way that is step-by-step and it's understandable from the developer's side, the Development Commission, and the public so that everybody plays by the same roles and they address the same issues. So we, we don't get freelancing. So here it is. So quickly, I'm going to run through this and you probably may have already had this whole packet, but I just want to just go through it and what's in the manual. So it's broken up into chapters. There's three of those chapters and there's, it starts with an introduction. The second is architecture and then the third is urban design. And so I'm going to go through each of those chapters. So first is architecture. As I mentioned, there's two, two districts and styles. And so there's Arts and Crafts, craftsmen, there's Northwest Lodge, Western Falls Front, and Urban Grange, which was something that was added from that presentation that I showed you. So this was added because we wanted to make sure that some of the areas in your industrial and service areas had a style that they could relate to. And so there was also this idea that there was some agricultural vernacular in town, like in Pickering, you've got an old barn. And how can we translate that into an urban form? So that was added. So urban core, it's the Northwest Contemporary Style is a kind of a terminology, frankly, that we've kind of ginned up. That's something that you won't find in all that many architectural manuals anywhere. So this is something that has really kind of been evolving. So we can call this something else if that's appropriate, but at this point, we're calling it Northwest Contemporary. And so here's a typical page for a manual. So it starts with a description of the district. So you see the blue band. So there's a section for that. There's a style, so Northwest Style. There is a guideline or a standard, if you will. And so that is massing. And then there's a description. So there's a one line, guideline, and then there's further description of what that means. And then there's a description of what is appropriate. And so it's one thing to have a lot of words. And so this is, you know, one of those things that we can add and subtract images and change images as you want. So what we want to do is show what do we mean by that? So there's a couple of images and some bullet points that describe that. And probably the thing that may give some people heartburn is what is not appropriate because it's easy to talk about appropriate, but it's often more valuable to see what is not appropriate. So in terms of such as a lodge, where you've got certain elements that you see here, we show where the elements are not appropriate. And I get into the detail on this, but it's probably take us too long and you've been here a long time. So then we get into urban design. And so here's a typical page like that. So again, we've, we've got the same sort of approach to this. So it's pretty straightforward. So you look for site and that's the, the section of this, of this chapter. Again, we've got an element, building edges, the one we're illustrating here. So what happens with the building edge? We want to see something with weather protection. So we want to talk about the guideline in particular. And then there's a description of that guideline. And then what is appropriate and inappropriate? So for example, this page talks about weather protection being a awning or a canopy. And then we say, what happens when people use that inappropriately? So for example, it becomes a vehicle for advertising, not necessarily rain protection. We see this often. So we want to be able to talk about those kind of things. So finally, what we've then do is distill this down to a simple checklist. And this checklist could be used for pre-application. It should be distributed to the developer when they're interested in a project, along with the manual and say, the first step is to go through this and one, to determine how you're going to respond to it. So you see, there's some just basic information at the top about the project, its location, some other things that you probably want to have is what are you going to need to submit? And then you then talk about these three things. So, so for example, there's a column for applies, complies, and then there are conditions. So for example, you've got all of these categories for traditional Isqwa. You don't have to respond to all of these unless you're doing a mix of buildings on your site, but you pick one. your site, but you pick one. So I picked arts and crafts, and then I go through each of these, and let's say it's a pre-proposal meeting with staff. And we talk about massing, scale, materials and color, and we say, did it comply, yes or no? And with this example, we'd say, well, you need to do some work for massing, and there may be some notes about conditions that go along with that. So this is really intended to just identify the key pieces and get a general response of this. That doesn't mean that you have to have, everything gets into the black checkmark. There might be one or two, and there might be a unique way that the developer, the architect may find an equal or better way of responding to it. But it becomes their, the responsibility to do that. And so this is generally how it would go. And you do the same thing for urban design. You hit all the key points, context, site, and then evaluate it. And so it gives you a way to focus on the problem areas, so not every element of the building becomes a discussion. So the commission doesn't have to spend a lot of time talking about 20 items, but maybe there's two or three. And it simplifies it and provides some focus to what that, the commission would have a discussion with a developer and the architectural team. And so here it is in summary. So if anything, I think if you come out of this, this is probably one of the most valuable tools to have as you refine and make this better over time. So that's it. I try to keep it fairly short. I know you've been sitting here. So if there's questions or responses, open for that discussion. I did want to say that there are some topics that we heard from the development commission and others' public response, and they have to deal with height. So for example, many of your, the areas that we're suggesting, the Isiqua style, those are really appropriate for buildings that are probably six stories or less. So the issue is today, in many of those areas, you can, through conditions, you can build a 10-story building. So what do you build? Or the question is, is it appropriate to do 10-story buildings? So that's a sort of a side issue that we've developed and kind of identified as part of this. And then the issue about transitions. How do you transition from the edges of an Isiqua style to an urban core? And we've kind of tried to respond to that with different types of buildings, but our sense is, we want to keep them separate and not start mixing them together. I think from an administrative standpoint, it's very difficult. So that's the other part. And then this idea about flexibility to foster creativity. We're really pushing for prescriptive standards, and because we think, and if this was a greenfield site in the middle of nowhere, maybe the flexibility is a better response, but you've got so much history and character here that we felt that it was probably better to err on the side of being prescriptive rather than allowing anything to go. So that's just for discussion. So I'm, yes?
One question.
Yeah.
I thought you mentioned earlier, well, first of all, thank you, great presentation. You mentioned something about saving your sort of interesting designs for like municipal buildings.
Yeah.
Can you explain what you mean by that? Because what, first thought I had is, so this, maybe the city doesn't have to comply with what private folks have to comply with? That's where my mind went.
Well, I think that it becomes, it's two issues. What we call it is compatibility, and when we talk about it, and where do you allow contrast? So the great places that we go and visit, so for example, if you go to Italian Hilltown, nobody's ever upset that most of the buildings are, look pretty much the same. What really is the defining places when you go to Florence or Siena is that Duomo. It's got the striations of the chapel, and it becomes that special place. And what we'd like to do is to think about what those special places are and to apply contrast very sparingly to those buildings. So I would suggest, when you want to build a library, that some of the stuff can go by the wayside. And it's really, I think, a design exercise from the city's standpoint, whoever they select for architect, to really create a building that is in contrast through the site planning and through the architecture, so that they become these focal points and jewels within an overall unified composition of the central Isiqua area. So we want exclamation points for those areas. We want them to contrast.
Thanks.
This is fantastic package. I am thrilled with everything I've seen. I sat on the development commission for 20 years, and when this code first came out, it was very aspirational, but hard to understand how to use it. This code that we see tonight, I have a greater degree of comfort that what you think you see on a plan or in the code, you can see that actually built at the end of it. So I like it. I just have one aspect that I'm a little concerned about, and that is, that in the style that you're calling Northwest Contemporary, and the location of town that it's in, we're a little bit different than most of the other Northwest cities in that we are surrounded almost 360 degrees by trees. And so that people's gaze is always going up as well as enjoying what's going on at ground level. And I think the ground level improvements here are phenomenal. I'm still not convinced that at the contemporary one with the backdrop of a forested hillside, that that square boxy top is appropriate. So that is the only aspect of the Northwest Contemporary that I think does not work with our hillside setting. And I actually think that activity, architecture at the top, and I go to Whistler, which is more of a mountain town design, the people's eyes are always going up in town. The top of the building, even in the contemporary, has to be stunning, not a box.
And I think we've heard a lot of that. And so we've shown you some examples that don't have that expression at the top. So the skyline piece of that, but there are pieces within here where we're suggesting sloped roofs, we're suggesting step backs. And so there's ways of capturing that skyline better, and maybe it needs to be a little bit stronger within the manual, but we share that desire as well.
Okay.
And so I think we, it could do some tweaking. Let's put it that way. So I think we've heard that before, and we'll take that and figure out what we can do for that, if there's something.
Hundred kudos, and that was the only little thing that I could find. I think you've done a really great job.
Okay.
Other questions? Comments? Paul?
Question about process. I heard you say a couple times, or at least, at least once, I'm sorry, about the commission. And I know you're, I think you were referring to the development commission, but not all levels of review. So how, could you, maybe staff can help me with this as well, is, I believe that this, these are not only, you know, standards to be applied throughout Central Isiqua, but how, the, what levels and who's applying them when?
Yeah.
Do we have to make any changes? Are we looking at any potential changes at all to our levels of review?
So I don't think we anticipate any level changes to levels of review. We did anticipate that.
Although this manual is, was initially focused on, you know, staff and development commission review, that there's no reason that we wouldn't want to use it for administrative reviews as well. So because any building that's less than 150,000 square feet and on smaller than three acres, depending on where it is in Central Isiqua, is an administrative review. And that can still be a fairly sizable building, and we wouldn't see any reason why we wouldn't want these same standards to apply.
Okay. So you see incorporating the tool as such as it is?
All projects in Central Isiqua.
All projects.
And we're still debating whether, you know, would this be chapter 18 of the Central Isiqua standards? I mean, we're focused on the tool. Now we're going to figure out where, how we integrate it, where we're adopting it into.
And do we feel that that's sufficient? I mean, these existing processes, just with a new tool, to actually still get the outcomes that we're striving for? Is there some other level of review or authoritative review? We've talked about, you know, just an architectural review, or is that just something that's going to happen, you know, by the DC, by the staff, by the administration?
I'm not sure yet. And the reason I, so he's sure.
He's sure.
I think for me, we spent the afternoon working with this tool with two different applicants. Gilman Lofts and Costco, it doesn't actually apply to Costco, but they wanted to understand it better in light of their project. And it's gotten me thinking about some of the questions that you're bringing up, and I haven't had a chance to talk to my, I'm red.
So I think at this point, you know, our expectation is that the tool itself is very, it's intended to be easy to understand. So it was originally, so some of the evolution are, you know, have been things like, you know, the original language said, in a particular case, you know, avoid steep pitched roofs. Okay? So our comment back was, help me understand, what is a steep pitched roof? Is it, you know, is it 12 to 1? You know, what's, give us some numeric to go with it. So that's what they're doing now. That's the evolution of the drafts of this thing, is actually making it easier for staff to be able to implement this. So right now, what we believe, and as Lucy mentioned earlier, we've gone through two beta tests with Gilman Lofts and Costco, and I think, you know, our take on it is, the way that they perform the checklist review was consistent with how we would have performed the checklist review. So we were in line with all the comments that came out of the consultants' review of both of those projects. So I think we're feeling pretty comfortable right now that the staff have the ability to use this tool adequately for the projects coming through, both with the commission and standalone when it's an administrative review.
Good. Glad to hear it, because that's, implementation is the key, that you have the strength behind you. It looks to me like, you know, just looking at myself, you should be able to do that, and that's great. So I love that part. The one part I have a question on is, under urban design, under compatibility harmony, so it talks about blending in with what's there.
Mm-hmm.
Now, we got a problem, is we got a few things that what's there is not what we want. So we'll make sure we don't want, at this point, we're going to not blend in with what's there. We're going to create our own, and there's going to be an oddball there, and that's where it's going to be.
And we have, for example, when we were talking about the studio lofts, which is next to, to the trail, and it's next to a storage building, next to a commercial building that's going to redevelop over time. So we said, where you've got a context where we're anticipating change, it needs to really respond to the context of the vision of Central Isiqua plan. So that was the intent. Because if it's auto-oriented and we want to have pedestrian-oriented, that's not the context we want to reinforce. But so, we appreciate that. But over time, you're going to get enough infill development that it will need to be sympathetic to what's adjacent to it.
And one thing I would add is that we've, when we got the draft, we saw the draft, staff saw the draft, chapter two, chapter three, Don can tell you, he got a lot of comments. We had three or four staff people go through, so we'd have lots of different perspectives of people who work with the document. They had sometimes a week, sometimes a little less, to incorporate responses. Not everything got worked in in that. We're looking forward to going through some of these other fine tuning things to look at the, make sure, as Keith said, we understand what the intent is, the words help us have the tools that we need to be able to implement it. That's, I think, what's going to happen between this first draft and the final draft. But the first, you know, we've taken the outline, now we've taken a first draft, we're trying to make sure that before we invest huge amounts of time in something, that we're headed in the right direction, that the kinds of tools and techniques that we're proposing using meet the community expectations, and then we dig into the next level to continue to refine it.
And I would say they did a really good job of viewing everything, and we didn't put everything in there, because we wanted to have a discussion about it, because it's a question of, we don't want, because it had a lot of stuff that we could have added. But our fear is, we don't want to get this thing so loaded up that it becomes very difficult to use. And so it really needs to be, what we say is, you need to regulate through this piece what really matters. And so the pieces that maybe, we need to draw a line, what this is and what is in the Central Isiqua Design and Development Standards, where maybe it's better off there or somewhere else. And so we said, let's be a little bit spare on this and not try to make it everything to everybody here. Those are one of the things we try to do.
Mariah?
I just wanted to say that I really like what I see so far, especially in terms of the materials, the wood and the brick, and just color palette. It seems to be written in a user-friendly way, and I'm glad to hear that it's being tested out. And I'm wondering, so the line in terms of when we could start using this, in terms of development that is slated to come forward, but this is new, where is that line? And is there something that we can do to encourage those that are, you know, that are on this side of the line, to use these new standards?
So I'm not sure which side of the line we're standing on. So, you know, obviously, anything that comes after the moratorium is lifted, it would apply. Gilman Lofts, you know, that was part of the development agreement.
Right.
Costco, I think their recognition is that while it doesn't apply to them, they are very interested in the community perspective, and they want a collaborative environment. And I think they want to be able to use some of the same terminology and such, because it will help the development commission, who's invested all this time. So no, for most of the other moderate to large size projects, we already have building permits in, so I think it's unlikely that we're going to be able to integrate much of the techniques.
So the ones, so the ones that would be in land use permit right now, where these tools would apply, I think, you know, as I go through my mind, which is not completely accurate, I can't think of anything. So we have, so like, stuff like Gateway and Vale and Inniswood, they're already permitted, so it's too late for them. You know, things like the new schools that might be coming in, they're not in yet. So, you know, if they were to come in before the moratorium was lifted, and I think they can, which I don't think, expect them to, we would definitely try and work with the school district to have these apply to them.
If they were in Central Isiqua.
If they were in Central Isiqua. Thank you. And so I don't know that there are any, you know, as I sit and pick my brain, as, because the things that we're kind of spooling around, you know, the redevelopment of space labs with a 40% affordable housing project, that kind of disappeared. And so some of the things that we're nibbling around the edges, I think, have just gone away. So I'm not sure that there's really that many that we would have that conversation with, but if there are, we would have that conversation. We would try and, I think what we're seeing is there's definitely value add to the two projects that they've looked at, and we would try and do that. Sorry.
Okay. So you were talking about taking it through some tests with staff. How about with any of the commission members?
Well, in terms of review, we haven't done that yet. We've just been digging in to them asking questions, giving us comments. We have three meetings with the development commission devoted to just looking at this draft.
But that would be, I think, a great suggestion, to take a project through them as a test run for them.
How they use it.
To see how staff use it and see whether they see it the same way, or whether there's discrepancies. So I think that would be a great exercise.
And then the other part was, when it come, when you have a project that comes through development commission, and this checklist, you know, applies, does, do you envision there being a recommended checklist? So staff has already prepared a checklist, and you have a recommendation and the reasoning behind your recommendations, rather than taking blank checklist to a panel of commission members and saying, fill it out?
Oh, yeah. No. And I think one thing that is somewhat analogous is that although it's more detailed, is we've been using a checklist for the commission as well. Now, I don't think they actually use that tool. I think it's more an applicant and staff tool, because it is. I think it's more an applicant and staff tool because it is a level of detail that is really not as of much, as much concern to the commission, which is where I think the manual and the point that Don made is important, is to try and identify those things that are really at the commission level of importance, like the style and the major urban design pieces and the kinds of things they can be looking at to achieve those and then having that checklist on that. So yes, we would fill that out and then that would be an opportunity to discuss, do you agree? Do you have concerns? Do you feel we've missed something? Additional conditions, edited conditions?
Okay, okay.
Just as a, just coming back to training for the commission, even if you don't have a current proposal to look, it was sometimes it is even helpful to go back and look at how you reviewed like a Vale or, or Atlas project and then say, would I have evaluated differently using this checklist?
Sure.
And you may come, it would be pretty telling to say, maybe I would have come up with a different solution or recommendation if I had it in a simple format that I could then respond to them and, and really draw out from the developer and the architect what are the key components that I have to get out of the project.
And I want to make sure that it's useful for the commission as well, because I think one of the comments we heard before was that the reviewing process, there were frustrations with it. And so that to the extent that this can, is much more helpful, obviously. And like you mentioned, the training, of course, there needs to be ongoing training as there's, you know, changes in those seats. So we don't want it to just become a rote process where it's stamped. We want them to be able to actually have their hands on it and just decide for themselves whether they agree or not with any of the recommendations. And my final personal comment is, I, I love it. It was fantastic and I'm looking forward to the final product and I'm really glad you're on board. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Don, could you go back to the slide that has the map? You have the, you've defined two areas of town. It's kind of a new way of mapping central area, Central Isiqua.
Yep, I can find that real quick here.
Toward the beginning.
There's one of them. Here it is.
What type of practical implications does this have? How, we've talked about how prescriptive this is and I don't, that's a new way of drawing lines and maybe there was a line with existing neighborhoods, not districts, neighborhoods. And also I note that the, the Western neighborhood is also included. And so where is that line? And, and also what does, how does Raleigh, how is Raleigh affected by this?
So all of the urban core is your existing regional center urban core area. So that line doesn't change. What we did is we combined all the outline areas into one style, rather than each, the Darst or Gilman having a different style. We said, generally, they're, they're about the same because they're influenced, they're more affected by adjacent neighborhoods, Old Town, others. And, and, and if we had so many different subareas within this, it becomes an administrative nightmare. So we just said, let's try to keep it fairly straightforward. But then again, it creates some problems. So for like, for example, we suggested one time, thinking about the, the areas where Microsoft and the other parcels in Eastlake are because they're big buildings and they really aren't traditional in scale or character. And we've drawn back on that simply because it's not part of that district and the Development Commission said generally, the development is not going to be there, it's going to be on the edges. So we said, all right, we'll, we'll pull it back to the urban core itself. But the line, you know, over time, you may, you may want to adjust it a little bit. I don't think it is a hard and fast line, but it's generally here.
So part of this one for me is, is if, you know, if you have two distinct architectures, one within the RGC and one outside, it now potentially starts to help the community understand where that edge is because, hey, the buildings look a little bit different on this side of the street than they do on that side of the street. Right? So it actually provides some better understanding of that distinction within our subarea, if, if we're successful.
And, you know, I think one of the topics of conversation with Development Commission and is some of the implications of these styles and their components. So in, in the traditional Isiqua area, there's only one style that goes over four stories. So are we going to end up with a lot of Northwest Lodge? Is that going to work? That was, you know, that was a big topic of conversation and, you know, that'll be a conversation that will, we haven't gotten to have with Grand Ole Rambla yet, but that's something we want to follow up with. There was a lot of conversation at the Development Commission, should it be a bright line between the two? Should traditional Isiqua styles be allowed in the urban core? Should it be allowed everywhere in the urban core? Should it be a transition zone? I mean, we, so there, there are a lot of these things that we're talking through to try and understand, should it be a bright line? Should it be a gentler, blurrier line?
And so generally, the, what we've kind of suggesting on here, the transition areas are your green spaces. So you've got Isiqua Creek, you've got hillsides, really create that natural transition area. But adjacent to that, for example, in the urban core, there's got to be a recognition that those are natural areas. So we're saying, those areas, you need to be, the design of the urban spaces and also the use of materials needs to be more consistent with the edges. So we're largely suggesting you do more, incorporate more wood into buildings in the urban core along those edges. And you can do those, you know, with change of technology into a pretty tall building now in wood, you know, with the CLT, all sorts of other new technology. It could actually open up a whole lots of innovation if you had more wood construction and more wood facades on buildings. So I think we're pretty comfortable with the transitions, but, you know, with that said, I think that there is some room for some adjustments if there's a need to, to adjust that line, because it is pretty hard and fast here.
And just because you mentioned it, sorry, real quick. So that's in the checklist. So this is in a transition zone. This is the, this is adjacent to an edge or the creek.
Right, or a hillside. And there's been a discussion about that. Is it hillsides of 10%, 15%? You know, and what's that? How do you ground that? And what's, what's the deciding point? And so that's all a little bit in process still.
All right, thank you.
Another one you mentioned earlier and about Gilman Lofts. And Gilman Lofts, and we said that they would, they would take this and look at it and see if there's any, you know, change they make if, you know, in draft form is, you know, whatever they could do. So you did that. Were there any changes you were able to make or they're too far down the road or what?
Well, there are some, I mean, there are some site changes that we have talked about with them today. We're not reorienting the building, we're not moving the building around, you know. I mean, that I think would be probably beyond what we could do within this project. We did talk a lot about the architectural styles. I think they want one style. Grand Ole Rambla suggested a different style. We had a lively conversation about it. And they're going to go back and study it some more now that they have, because, you know, we, day that you guys got the manuals, the first time we had the whole manual. So we sent that to them, so they've just had a few days to study it. They're going to go and look into it more and let us know which style they want to pursue.
It was a point of discussion, let's put it that way. It was, you know, it's a relook of what that was. And we, in particular, they had a building that was red. And our discussion with them is that coming out of a blue building, probably not a good idea, just strategically to come with a red building in Central Isiqua. So that was one of the touchpoints that we said, we don't want to see bright primary colors. That's not consistent with this district. And so generally, they agreed with that. It came down to the use of materials for what we described as an urban grange, which is more of an agricultural form, as opposed to maybe an arts and crafts, which has more wood and stone, pitch roofs are different. And they, it comes down to scale and massing of the buildings, which is appropriate for mixed use and what they're proposing. And so it's to them to justify, we said, arts and crafts, why they should, it's okay to do a grange, which is allowable within Central Isiqua, but the building form that they're presenting is not an agricultural building. So they can change the building and the architecture a little bit, but it's a, it's a work in process, let's put it that way.
Thank you. Good to hear. And then just one pet peeve. When you looked at weather protection, if we want to make things walkable around here, weather protection is, I think, a key element. And in, on the page that dealt with weather protection, you talked about those things. And what I see in weather protection usually is they, they're, it's there and then it's filled with stuff so no one can walk in that space that it's covered and there's pots and tables and everything else. And I found it interesting that the pictures you had in that section showed the weather protected area filled with top pots and tables and so on and so forth. So just a way of, you know, I think that's critical for us to be able to use that as walkable. And so how, if you put it there, how can you keep it as a walkable area and give you some weather protection at the time being?
That's a good point. Appreciate that.
I have what I hope is a quick question. Intended to be a quick question because it's late. We had a situation a couple of years ago where we had a local business that painted itself in Seahawks colors and they got in trouble and they were required to get rid of their Seahawks colors. If one wanted to, if one wanted to try to float an exemption that would allow specific exemptions for people choosing colors associated with Major League sports teams, how would one go about doing that?
So that's, that's super not short question. So first off, we're talking Central Isiqua, that was Old Town. Old Town has a specific color board where it says, you have to use just these colors. That was the problem. This is much more, even though it's prescriptive, it's do this, don't do this, but there's room in between to pick a lot of different variety. So I do not believe we would have that same issue in Central Isiqua that we had in Old Town with supporting one of our sports teams.
It would have to be a muted green and a dark blue.
I see. Color rush. Conversation, I would love to continue at another time in regards to Old Town. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really great.
Thanks, Don.
Reports on regional activities and issues, anything? Okay, seeing none, I get to do this for Jurn.